Good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening council meeting to order. And the first item will be adoption and receipt of the agenda items with several changes. As I've understood, that delegations D1 and D2 would like to reverse order, so we will accommodate that. So D2 will go first, then D1. And there's a late delegation, D6. So with approval of the agenda, that would also be approving the late delegation, D6. So councillor Fox moved second by councillor Long. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Next item is to adopt the minutes of the regular evening council meeting of January 29th, and the public hearing meeting of January 29th. Got a motion for both? Councillor Fox, councillor Davis? Any errors or missions? All those in favor? Posed, carried. So now we move on to our annual presentations, and move on to delegations. So the first delegation will be Mr Bert Hick. Delegations have five minutes, not counting time for questions. For the clerk, just provide your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. My name is Bert Hick. I'm president of Rising Thai Consultants. We do liquor licensing consulting in Canada, and particularly British Columbia. I am appearing before you today as a delegation to present to you some new information that you were not aware of when council considered this application to amend the CD29 zone to permit the relocation of the Shark Club Liquor Store to the Thunderbird Centre. When you consider this matter on December the 11th, council was not aware of some of the following relevant facts that were not contained in the staff report, or perhaps were not stated clearly enough. First of all, the decision has been made to buy the applicant to move the liquor store from the current location to an alternative site in the province of British Columbia. I think it was clear to us from watching the council meeting, that some of the councillors felt that if they denied the application to relocate, it would continue to stay at the existing location with the existing landlord. That's not the case, and Mr Thompson, the next delegation, will out to you why that is the case. They tend to relocate this application to another viable site. They would prefer to move it to the Thunderbird Centre, because it makes sense, from their perspective, and from a community land use perspective. And the preference is to stay in the Walnut Grove to serve the businesses and residents within the community, who are their customers to the store. But under provincial regulation, now, different from when the store was first located, at the current location, one can now move a liquor store anywhere in the province, and you do not have to have, under provincial regulations, an adjoining liquor primary licensed establishment. There was also reference made at the December 11th meeting about the estate wine store that was located in the Thunderbird Centre, and the fact that in a previous application in 2016 to relocate the Shark Club, Katerina led an opposition campaign to that liquor store moving into the same plaza as her estate wine store. That is no longer a relevant factor. Last year, Katerina worked with us and our company to arrange for the sale of her estate wine store. She sold it to H.Y. Louis, and they then subsequently relocated that estate wine store to West Vancouver, where it's located and operating directly beside the Fresh Street Market. Therefore, the prior opposition of the owner of the Okanagan Wine Store is not relevant. I think what is relevant is the fact that there was a wine store in the Thunderbird Plaza, didn't cause any problems or issues whatsoever, and what we're trying to do is put a licensee retail liquor store into the same plaza. The other relevant factor is the one kilometer distance between liquor stores. Under the Regulations to Liquor Toll Licensing Act, you can only relocate a liquor store to another location as long as it's beyond a kilometer from another store. And if you are moving it in an area where there's already another store within a kilometer, you have to move it further away. So in the case of this relocation, and I've attached a map showing the location of our site at the current Sandman location, as well as the Walnut Grove Liquor Store and the Government Liquor Store, this store cannot move to the east, because it'd be moving closer to the Walnut Grove Liquor Store on 88th Avenue. The only way we can move this store is to go west, and stay in township of Langley. The Thunderbird Centre qualifies. And I think that is relevant, because that makes the location somewhat narrowed. From our experience, the Thunderbird Centre is a logical location for a liquor store, particularly from a land use perspective. We've been involved in this business for 30 years, and our assessment is that the Thunderbird Centre is a completely logical spot for a liquor store. Indeed, I'm surprised that the government hasn't put an LDB store in this location years ago, before the one kilometer radius distance came into place. It has easy traffic flow in and out, lots of parking, and easy access. It's located in a development with other appropriate tenants, such as major grocery store, drugstore, bank, and retailers. It's even got a dog food store. So people can park the car, go to the grocery store, go to the liquor store, go to the pet store, go to the bank, go to Starbucks, and then go home. It's got good visibility, and provides the customers with one-stop shopping convenience, and it also saves money. To me, the Thunderbird Centre is all of this, and should have a liquor store to complement the tenants. Now, the other point I just want to make to you in closing is, I've been doing this consulting for 30 years, and I remember coming out here to speak to your council years ago when there was a different arnissen on council. And I think councillor Fox was there at the time, and years ago. But anyway, this is the first application, in December, when I saw what happened, where we never got to a public hearing. Usually, we get to go to a public hearing, even if we're doing something like putting a pub in a neighborhood, we've got people in opposition, and there's strong community opposition, we always get to a public hearing. This is the first time, and when I saw what happened in the December meeting, that we got turned down even going to a public hearing to let the public speak. So I'm a little amazed at that, and I just don't understand what happened. Anyway, thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. I do have a question from a member of council. Councillor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for the letter. Couple of questions. If you relocate the club, will it still be called, or relocate the liquor store, will it still be called the Shark Club Liquor Store?
I'll leave that to Mr Thompson to address.
Okay. And my second question is, in the letter, you had pointed out that the current tenant plans to leave anyway. Like, when their lease is up, that's it, they're going.
That's their plan.
Okay. Is there anything in the B.C. law that prevents another liquor store from taking over that tenancy, then?
Yes. It's the one kilometer radius. No other liquor store can go into.
Okay, but if you don't get the one kilometer liquor store, and you're just leaving, because you say you're just gonna leave.
Yeah. We could take this liquor.
And there's nobody there, then, can they not get a license from someplace else in B.C. to go in there?
The only other store that could move there would be the Walnut Grove Liquor Store, which is attached to the motel, or the hotel. It used to be a travel lodge. But it's the only one that could move to that site, because the one kilometer radius, as evidenced by that map I have, for around the Langley Liquor Store, covers this current site. So we could take this store and move it to Prince George, we could move it to Victoria, we could take up to Kelowna, but we would prefer to stay here, because they're customers for the store here. And from a liquor perspective, one of the objectives of relocating this store is to expand the square footage, not lot, but allows them to expand the wine selection particularly, and provide a better quality service to the people of Walnut Grove. So in other words, coming back to your question, councillor Richter, is the one kilometer radius around the Walnut Grove Liquor Store covers the current site and the Thunderbird site, so we could only move it further away from the Walnut Grove site.
Okay. So right now, with the Sandman Hotel, and like this Shark Club Liquor Store, as well as the Walnut Grove Liquor Store, they're both within a one kilometer radius.
Correct.
Okay, but if you moved over to the other site, you'd still both be in the one kilometer radius.
Yeah, but under provincial regulation, we are moving it further away from the other stores. And that's why we can only go west with this store, we can't go east. If you're already within a one kilometer radius of a competing liquor store, you can only move it further away. You can't move it any closer to the competing store.
Okay. So the building that you're in, that you're tenant in now, they don't have the option to bring in another license?
No. The only one they could bring in would be to approach the owners of the Walnut Grove Liquor Store, buy their store, move it over, or persuade them to move over. But if we go over to the Thunderbird Centre, well, the area's still sanitized.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions, council. Thank you. So before I bring up the next delegation, I was remiss, I wanted to introduce the social justice 12 class from the Langley Education Centre, who are here with us today to observe. Welcome here, and trust you'll find it informative and interesting. Thank you for coming. All right. So now we'll have Mr Scott Thompson. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, your worship. Good evening, your worship, councillors, members of the press. My name is Scott Thompson, and I represent the Shark Club Liquor Store, and wish to relocate, that wishes to relocate from its current location near the Sandman Hotel to the Thunderbird Centre next to the IGA. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today because council on December the 11th voted against the zoning amendment that would allow our liquor store to relocate to Thunderbird Centre. The rezoning application number is 100483. I believe that most members of council did not understand how their actions will affect the citizens of Walnut Grove. Our liquor store is not a viable business at its current location. Development around the store has left it with practically no exposure to the street. Given this, we are left with two options. Keep it a liquor store within the community and relocate it to Thunderbird Centre, or relocate the LRS licence to another community in B.C. If we're forced to relocate this licence, because of the way the provincial liquor laws are applied, no new liquor store can come to this area, which means the community of Walnut Grove forever loses a liquor store. We don't want this to happen. Instead, we want to reinvest in the community by providing a premium liquor and wine offering. It also gives the community an opportunity to cross-shop with all the other local businesses within Thunderbird Centre. The following are some facts that council and the citizens of Walnut Grove need to be aware of. First one. The current zoning at Thunderbird Centre permits a liquor store, but due to previous provincial liquor laws, the zoning required a liquor store to be attached to a bar. Provincial liquor laws now allow liquor stores to run independent of bars. Proposed zoning amendment is to update the existing zoning to be consistent with current liquor laws. The second one. Your staff are supportive of the zoning amendment. Three other similar zoning amendments have been previously approved by council. 8399 200th Street, 19665 Willowbrook Drive, 4143 208th Street. Third one. Because of the way the liquor laws work, the relocation of our liquor store to Thunderbird Centre does not negatively affect in any way the ability for the surrounding liquor stores to move their stores. As evidence of this, the liquor board has granted us preliminary site plan approval to relocate our LRS licence to Thunderbird Centre. Last year, the wine store owner within Thunderbird Centre, on her own accord, sold and relocated her wine store to West Vancouver. As a result, the local businesses in Thunderbird Centre have no liquor store to assist them in cross-shopping. Fifth reason. Last November, we ran a public consultation about the zoning amendment, and received full support from our, from community members that attended, for the exception of our existing landlord. Our existing landlord does not want us to relocate, for obvious reasons. On December 11th, the rezoning application was voted down on the basis that the liquor store is doing just fine at its current location, as opposed to voting on whether or not this application should go forward to public consultation. This troubles me. So now I ask that council has heard the facts, and understands that the community is facing the loss of a liquor store forever, I respectfully request a couple of the councillors, on behalf of the citizens of Walnut Grove, put forward a motion to allow this rezoning application to go forward to public consultation. I see no reason why council should stand in the way of the public having the opportunity to be heard here. I would also like to remind council that any members of council that have an undue bias towards our existing landlord have a duty to their citizens to accuse themselves from any vote related to this application. The citizens of Walnut Grove deserve the right to be heard here. Thank you very much, and I preach. Any questions?
Thank you. Councillor Richter.
Yeah. So you're saying the store is no longer visible from the street?
Correct.
Okay, which street is that?
88th.
88th. So if people are on 88, they can't see your?
Yes, I have pictures I can put up here that shows the exposure that we have to 88.
Okay. And now, have you lost money in this location? Are you not making money anymore?
In 2017, we made $1,700 at this location.
And now, you mentioned about allowing it to go forward to public consultation. Was a public open house not held? Did you not get information from the public prior to that?
And all members that attended were in support of this application, for the exception of our existing landlord.
Okay. And the last one is, I still don't understand, if there are two current liquor stores within a one-mile radius, as it appears from this map that there is, wouldn't both those sites be grandfathered?
Could you please repeat the question?
According to what your letter is saying here, the map, you've got the two liquor stores that are within a one-mile radius.
Correct.
So obviously, that happened before the new rules came in.
Correct.
So wouldn't both those sites still be grandfathered?
Correct.
So both those sites can still hold a liquor licence?
Correct. Correct. They can remain where they're at, and as Mr Bert Hick's had expressed, there are certain limitations in where they can move, but no new liquor licence can come to this community. If our liquor licence disappears, no new licence can come here. And what we're looking to do is reinvest in this store, and provide a more premium experience for shoppers at our liquor store.
Okay. But that could also negatively affect the other one that's in the radius too, right?
Well, we already are currently within that radius, so outside of trying to promote our business, if by promoting our business it affects another one, that's typically how business works. It's, we want to reinvest in our stores. They have the full ability to reinvest in their stores as well.
So can you not get permission to put like a larger sign up if you've lost visibility from 88? I haven't been up on 88 in a while.
Sure.
I don't know if it's visible.
I do have pictures of its visibility. If we could please turn the projector on.
So that is a very quick snapshot of the visibility from 88th Street, and where you do have visibility in between all of the QR, the fast food restaurants. Here's another one. It is a purely destination-based restaurant.
So I'm not seeing any signage around there.
Because you can't see the signage. The trees obscure the signs. Do you see where, the arrow points to the liquor store?
Yeah, I get that. I get where the roof is. But can't you put a sign like out on 88th Avenue, saying there's a liquor store in there?
A sign doesn't overcome the ability to actually see where you're going to go to. And we've had, as I said, as development, and you can see in the, on the first picture, if I may point, these were built in around 2007, and since then, they have completely obscured the visibility to 88th and Highway 1. And sales since that development has happened, as well as the development in front of us, have continually went downhill, to the point where we are now about to lose money.
Okay. So when that development went forward in 2007, did you raise concerns then about blocking visibility to your location?
I'm sorry. Could you please just repeat the question?
When, the development that you say that's in there now, that's blocking visibility to your location, was that a concern that you raised back in 2007, when council was considering that application for those apartment buildings?
I'm not sure if it was raised at the moment in time, but our lease runs out in one year, and we have a decision to make. Either we stay where we're currently at, or we move the location. And so we have two options. Either move it to Thunderbird, which Mr Bert Hick's have expressed what the constraints are within the existing community, or relocate the licence elsewhere within the province. And we fully intend to continue to own this licence. We do not intend to sell this licence.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just curious, do you have photos that show the proposed location from 88th Avenue, to see how visible it is from 88th?
Correct.
Do you have photos? You have photos from this one, for the Shark Club one, but the new site?
Of the new site.
I'm kind of finding it hard to see how I would see it from 88th.
Its visibility is brought by being adjacent to the IGA.
Okay.
And that brings a lot of visibility to it.
Comparing to 88th, I'm looking, did you ever see it from 88th?
No, that's fair.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you for coming today. Just a couple of questions. How long has this, the Shark Club Liquor Store, been there?
Since around 1997.
Since 1997. And was it, when it first, you first went in there, it was a viable business?
Correct. And? We had visibility to 88th Avenue, as well as Highway 1 at that point in time. So we had visibility. People could see us day in and day out.
Right. So I'm wondering, like, how much has the, the loss of the Shark Club nightclub or bar, the loss of that in that time period without it, how much has that affected your business?
It has steadily decreased over time, and including the restaurant closing. Sales have steadily went down. But regardless of the recent opening, sales have not went up. Sales have continued to decrease to the point where it's not making money, even with the new restaurant open.
Right. So you don't consider that it would become a viable business with the new restaurant opening, and with better signage, like?
We're at the juncture where we're looking to make a reinvestment within the community, and that reinvestment, we're struggling to see, given the lack of visibility, that it makes sense to make a reinvestment at this location.
Right. Okay.
And we also are cognizant with all the local businesses over in Thunderbird Centre that could advantage from having a liquor store there. There's a lot of cross-shop, there's a lot of consistent trips that go to a liquor store. And so all of the local businesses that are within Thunderbird get to benefit from relocating this licence to Thunderbird Centre. And as Mr Hick's had expressed, that this licence is the only licence that could relocate there.
Right. Okay. Just, as you were talking and making your presentation, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly, that you believe that the decision made previously by council was not entirely based on fact, that somehow their personal relationships with owner might have influenced their decision, and therefore it's sort of an untoward decision? Is that your opinion?
I'm, I leave it to the members of public to make their own decision. I ask if, I certainly haven't overtly lobbied any member of council. I'm not sure if our existing landlord has lobbied any of council. It's, I guess it's a matter-of-fact question. If there has been lobbying happen, members of public should know that.
Okay. So I just was, you didn't then say that you thought that might be the case? I just wasn't sure if that was your belief. It seemed like you were admonishing council to not, to base their?
I have my concerns that there has been lobbying from existing landlord to members of council. It's a, have members of council been lobbied by our existing landlord?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that that was your position.
Sure. That's my position.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for coming out tonight, and presenting the information you've got. I want to go to the context, and councillor Whitmarsh mentioned this about not viable. The history of this particular, the recent history of this particular location is rather interesting, because of course it was originally adjacent to the Shark Club, and the traffic in and out of the Shark Club, I'm sure accounted for a substantial amount of the income that was associated with the success of this particular store. As you've alluded to, it is somewhat discreetly located, but those people in and out of there would have, in many cases, I think, frequented. It shut down, and that particular location sat dormant for, I don't know, it's probably 18 to 20 months, or even longer potentially. Now the Oakenthorn is in there, and it opened in, if I'm not mistaken, early December. So it's had roughly two months, maybe a little bit more, to start to establish itself as a viable business. So really, in terms of the context, you quoted figures in 2017 of accumulated profit of $1,700 over a 12-month span. We've only had, I would say, maybe two, two and a half months of the Oakenthorn being in place. So you say it's continuing to lose money, and it's not looking like it's going to become a viable option in terms of it increasing its revenues. I mean, can you explain on what premise you wouldn't think that with the Oakenthorn establishing itself now as a community pub venue, that you don't feel, and how can you substantiate it, you don't feel that it would get back up to or above the old cash flow business factor of when the Shark Club was there?
The, our current landlord knew that, that our plans were to relocate this location when the Oakenthorn had decided to move to this location. So it, number one, it was known by them that it was our intention of relocating this liquor, this liquor licence. So they, with that knowledge, had chosen to relocate to this location. From our perspective, we have seen a steady decline in sales over the last five years. And any type of closure of existing restaurants, or reopening of restaurants, have not influenced the adrenal trend line that this location is, has become to a point where it's not viable where it's currently at. And that existing tenant, before they made that decision to move this location, knew that we had planned to leave.
Oh, I guess. I'm still not convinced. I'm not a business person, that's not my background. But I'm still not convinced that, given, given the opening in just the recent past, that the trend line might not improve, and in fact, potentially even get better, because the Shark Club and the Oakenthorn are slightly different in the context and clientele that they draw, I would assume. And the Oakenthorn relocated there, obviously, they thought that was a just move, and one that was viable for them business-wise. So they bring that clientele that they've already established just a short distance away. So I guess I'm not convinced that the short term and the long term are two different factors here. I think the short term, yeah, I can see where you, with the shutting of the Shark Club, it definitely was detrimental to the bottom line. But I think we have to give it some time here, to see what the value of the Oakenthorn is for customer relationships and customer attachment to the new, to that existing store.
If we were to introduce that, then I guess we also have to introduce the additional business that has been brought to all of the tenants at Thunderbird Centre from relocating this licence to there. So you can't bring up that argument without bringing up the argument that the net benefit to any business that is in proximity to this licence. So I would hazard to guess that the additional net benefit is greater if this licence is moved to Thunderbird Centre than it is to remain where it's currently at.
And that's hypothetical, I realize that, but I'm talking about?
You're the one that brought up the hypothetical question.
Right, I know. I brought that hypothetical question up, but I want to deal with the actual substantive business, business line, the trend line, as you refer to it.
We're talking about a rezoning application, not about the viability?
Yeah, but, but your point is that it's more viable in a different location, and I'm suggesting, okay, let's give it some time in the existing location, to see if in fact, the reality is that?
We have less than one year on our lease.
Fair enough, I think that's?
Yeah, that's fair enough, I realize that.
Thank you. Councillor Quolly?
Thank you. I mean, you just made a good point. This isn't about the viability of your business, we're not voting on that. We're voting on the appropriateness of the rezoning, and the liquor store in Thunderbird Centre. And that's entirely what my vote was based on.
Okay.
So it's unfortunate you think there's other things at play, but I can assure you, I owned a business in a location that wasn't viable, and I made the decision to move my business, and it changed my business. Unfortunately, your business is controlled by provincial regulations, not municipal regulations.
Right.
So unfortunately, I, I didn't see at the time, the need for the liquor store in the Thunderbird Centre, and, you know, bringing up the discussion around cross-shopping, this, the departure of your store will have an impact on the merchants in the plaza that it's currently in. So, you know, I'm sorry you decided to think there's other things at play here, but my vote was based entirely on the, my vision of appropriateness for this liquor store at Thunderbird Centre, and that's not what was intended when the Thunderbird Centre was built.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, well, the, there's, the new information, just clarify what your new information that you bring forth here was, was it just regarding the two issues? One issue of, of moving, council, that if you, when you relocate it, if we voted it down, you had to stay there?
Correct.
Is that, okay. And the other one was, it didn't get, it didn't get to a public hearing?
Wine lady, the wine lady? So the wine lady, new piece of information is that when it was voted down the first time it came to council, the, the wine lady that owned the, the wine store within Thunderbird Centre was concerned about an LRS licence, the liquor store, moving or relocating to Thunderbird Centre. And so, part of voting down, I can only assume, was due to the, the wine lady's concern about an LRS licence coming to Thunderbird Centre. Since the first application that was brought forward to the city, this wine lady has relocated her licence to West Vancouver. It no longer exists within Thunderbird Centre, leaving a hole that there's no liquor licence, or, or no liquor store within Thunderbird Centre. And so this is new piece of information, and that's why we brought about this additional application.
Okay, so your motion is, you, you want a member of council...
I want a member of council, because on December the 11th, First and Second Reading does not approve a liquor store at Thunderbird Centre. All it does is approves that this goes to public hearing. The public at Walnut Grove deserve an opportunity to say, do they want one at Thunderbird Centre? And it was voted down seven to one. That concerns us. We want somebody on council to bring forward a motion to allow this application to go to public hearing, so the community members of Walnut Grove have an opportunity. But they haven't been, they haven't been given an opportunity, because it was voted down on the First and Second Reading, which is highly unusual. That's why I was suspicious. Obviously, we're a business owner, but...
I, I just wanted to clarify that, so that's...
Yeah, the request is for...
That's why you're here as a delegation, because you want to request...
I, I'm asking for somebody to bring about a motion to bring this back to public hearing.
To reconsider.
To revive this.
To reconsider for First and Second Reading, that's what he's asking.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Richter.
Yeah, a comment and a question. Question first, is the, are the grocery store that's in where the location is that you want to go, are they selling wine now? Are they one of the grocery stores that can sell wine?
No, they're not.
They're not? Do they have any plans to sell wine, do you know?
Not currently.
Not currently, okay. My comment I would just make is that I don't believe council's discretion is fettered at First and Second. There's no obligation for us to send anything to public hearing, none. If we have concerns, we have the right to exercise our discretion and to vote the way we did. So for you to stand up there and say, we owe you a public hearing? No, we don't.
And the community loses a liquor store because of it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I think that was the, that was the comment. I don't have any further questions, thank you for your presentation. Okay, so now we move on to Delegation D3, Willoughby Residence Association. I've got, I've got both mics on, so if you both need to...
Okay.
And again, if you just let us know your name and where you're from.
Okay. Your worship, respected councillors, township of Langley staff, and the members of the audience, my name is Cynthia Hamilton, this is my husband Brian McKay, and we live in the David Jones Heritage House. Thank you for the opportunity to let us speak. We represent the Willoughby Residence Association, the WRA has of this writing, forty-four voting members, five hundred and sixty-one social media followers, an engagement of over fifteen hundred people, and a reach of four thousand to eleven thousand Township of Langley residents. And to quote the 2016 Annual Report, "Langley takes pride in providing a sustainable community, but it needs to meet the needs of the residents in Willoughby. It is important that if we are to have densification, that we have livability. The Willoughby Residence Association and its members can see lots of areas that could improve the residents' quality of life and bring more of the sustainable community concept to Willoughby now, not in twenty-five years." To begin with, in Willoughby, a relatively flat area compared to the rest of Metro Vancouver, the walkability score in the MLS real estate site is eighteen, eighteen. This means cars are mandatory, yet building permits are issued to developers provided a point six-five to one spot-to-home ratio. In comparison, Walnut Grove has a walkability score of sixty-six, so I'm not really sure why Willoughby is the have-nots. Willoughby, of all the township of Langley neighbourhoods, has the highest population according to a 2016 Annual Report, and is the fastest-growing area of Metro Vancouver. We understand with growth, there are bound to be growing pains. It was stated recently by staff at an evening meeting of council that Willoughby is only built out to approximately thirty-eight percent. This would indicate that the growing pains are here to stay in Willoughby for a long time. There are certain measures that can be taken at reasonable cost now to mitigate some of this pain. The WRA knows that sidewalks and bike lanes and traffic lights and crosswalks are not without cause, but they save lives, the lives they save are priceless. At the request for a membership, we'd like to highlight just five of the walkability issues, four where sidewalks could help, and one where traffic calming could greatly reduce the risk of personal harm. Eighty-sixth Avenue, the 204 and 200th, we recognize that developers are building a lot of the sidewalks in their continued haphazard and inconsistent methods, and without regard to bikeability or crosswalks. There are several stretches in this area where no development is happening. So my little arrow up there, there is no development, that's the, I don't know, junkyard or wherever it is, that, there's no development there. Talked to the developer at Isle of Man across the street, he says apparently he has not been directed to finish the sidewalk across the street, even though we've asked him to. Eighty-sixth at 202, again, this is all leading to Carvel, there's somebody who's looking to get hit, no place for him to go, and he's on the wrong side of the street. Again, more on Carvel, lovely sidewalk, ends, goes nowhere, there's no crosswalk there, there's no way to get to Carvel from that station. Eighty-sixth looking northeast, this homeowner isn't selling, so why isn't the homeowner building a sidewalk if the developers have to? No place to go, once you get there, that sidewalk just ends. Moving on, 202B between 68A and 70A, did we mention there's a daycare here? Great sidewalks, great place for children to walk, and the sidewalk to the north of it just ends, doesn't go anywhere. Looking along to 207th and 82nd to approximately 205th beside the New Yorkson Park, again, we've asked about sidewalks, everybody says it's not their responsibility. And these are the developers I've talked to, that when I go to the open houses, I ask who's doing the sidewalks. Eightieth between 208, 200 from both sides, again, sidewalks that just end, they just go nowhere. And then we get down to 198 and 70th Avenue, where the park just dumps into the street without sidewalks or crosswalks, it's just a hazard waiting to happen. So at a cost of about $300 per linear metre, we would ask that council include these projects in this year's budget and bring some much-needed livability to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a question from Council Richter.
Yes, thank you very much. Excellent photographs, and photographs always speak louder than words sometimes. Do you have a copy of your presentation that you could leave with our clerks, so that we could all get copies of the pictures?
I was writing very fast, I couldn't keep up.
Oh, sorry, the PowerPoint is here, I don't know where that goes though, because this is my first time, oh, there, and my husband has a copy without all my scribblings on.
Okay. The other question I had, you mentioned when you first started that there were five issues, I actually got up to nine.
Oh, so it's, sorry. So eighty-sixth Avenue around Carvel, Carvel is probably the biggest one, and I'm the, Willoughby Residence Association has different captains, I'm the Yorkson captain, so I see Yorkson a little bit more. 202B between 68A and 70A, 207th along 82nd, and Eightieth between 208 and 200th, and our Rutley captain is here, and she's brought up 198 and 70th down at Rutley.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, so we can get that, those, you know, we have that in written form, that'd be great.
Great, thank you very much.
Because I was scribbling as fast as I could and looking at pictures, sorry to run them all down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, the next one, next delegation is Solen Buckholz, please go forward.
How's the volume, I'm usually too loud, so I'll try to quiet down tonight. That's good enough, yeah.
Picks up pretty well.
Perfect.
He can whisper.
Good?
Good.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Solen Buckholz, 9017 Hudson Bay Street. I'm a Director of the Fort Langley Community Association, and I'm excited to present our second annual Vision Fort Langley survey. Each year, our communities are experiencing increased growth, and the importance of community associations and engagement becomes more relevant. The FLCA's mandate is to represent the needs of all community members alike, residents and businesses. Following up on last year's survey, we came up with a survey we felt would be consistent, comprehensive, engaging, and allow the community as a whole to express their opinions regarding the state of Fort Langley now, and its hopes and concerns for the future. This survey also helps the FLCA and any other interest group, including the TOL, help prioritize its goals for the coming year. This presentation is the summary of our 2017 community survey. This year, the Fort Langley Community Association partnered with the Fort Langley Legacy Foundation Group for funding, along with private donors. In future, we look forward to funding from the Township of Langley, supporting the ongoing work of community groups like the FLCA, run by community volunteers. Next slide. In summer 2017, the FLCA mailed surveys to every household in Fort Langley, including Bedford Landing and the Quandletford First Nation and surrounding acreages. FLCA members are also hand-delivered surveys to every one of the approximately fifteen hundred households and businesses in Fort Langley that provided access. The community was also able to fill out surveys online. In total, three hundred and fifty-nine surveys were filled out. This was a thirty percent increase over last year's two hundred and seventy-seven responses. This makes our survey statistically relevant and shows an increase of engagement from our community, validating the interest and need for this ongoing work. Again, we ensured an unbiased review of the data and comments by hiring an independent consultant, Modus, who has historically worked closely with the township in past engagements. We will now share with you the results of the Vision Fort Langley survey with the help of a visual breakdown, which was broken into two main sections. Multiple-choice answers focusing on demographics, interests, concerns, and areas of usage of the community. Written answers to give all community members the ability to express their opinions in full, and allow for analysis of the general community feelings on the survey subjects. I now turn this over to George to discuss the results of that survey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is George Dotty, 8935 Glover Road, I will now show you the responses to the multiple-choice section of the survey. You'll see in question one, three hundred and eleven were residents, forty-four were business owners who are also residents, and four were business owners not residing in the fort. On the next slide, we asked residents how long they resided in Fort Langley. Thirty-two percent of the respondents are twenty-one-plus-year residents, and almost as many were five-year-or-less residents. As this graph shows, the value of this survey is that it encompasses all demographics within Fort Langley as a community. With eighty-three percent, we see in this next chart that there is a high level of respondents who walk and cycle to the commercial core on a regular basis. With seventy-eight percent, we see on this next chart that a high level of respondents also drive to the commercial core on a regular basis. We then asked the question, how often do you access the following Fort Langley services or activities? Sixty-seven percent visit eating establishments, coffee and tea shops weekly or more, with a further twenty-six who go, who go at least monthly. Sixty-six visit, sixty-six percent visit other Fort Langley businesses weekly or more, and a further twenty-six percent monthly as well. What these four previous questions show is that the community members shop in the commercial core and do so often. For walking trails, we found that sixty-two percent make use of the Fort Langley walking trails weekly or more. We also found that twenty-five percent of respondents use cycling routes on a weekly or more basis, and a further twenty-one percent do so monthly. We also asked about a few other community areas. We asked about the Fort Langley National Historic Site, the Centennial or Farm Museum, and CN Station. All had significant numbers visiting once per year, with the library being visited more often on a monthly basis. On this slide, we asked, which of the following community cultural activities are attended or plan to attend this year? This section was designed to give us a baseline year-over-year to help us identify goals for the FLCA, as well as sharing this with township and community to help plan events in Fort Langley. The most widely-attended event is the Cranberry Festival, as usual, followed by the Remembrance Day Services, Farmer's Market, and then the May Day Parade. In the 2016 survey, the additional events on this chart were identified as being of interest. We asked for the level of interest in each in this ser, this year's survey. The largest response, with two hundred and eighty-four, was more music events and concerts, followed by theatre productions and First Nations events. We included this next question about the effects of the film industry due to comments we received on last year's community survey, as well as subsequent Fort Langley Community Association meetings. While we certainly cannot understate the negative impact that some of our community have reported, the clearly larger number is that of a positive impact from forty-four percent of the respondents. Thirty-four report, thirty-four percent responded with no impact, and twenty-two said it was Also in our 2016 survey, more than fifty percent of respondents identified the lack of parking in the commercial core as a significant problem. Under current Township of Langley bylaws, new developments in Fort Langley are only required to provide half as many parking spaces as other developments in the rest of the township, so we decided to look into this with this survey. We asked, do you think the Township Council should require new developments in Fort Langley to provide the same number of parking spaces as developments in other parts of, of the township? The answer was a resounding yes, with seventy-two percent of respondents wanting the parking With the township starting to work building sidewalks in Ninety-sixth Avenue, starting to work on the pedestrian-controlled crosswalk across Ninety-sixth Avenue at Edel, thank you for that, and are planning to upgrade the intersection at Glover and Mavis, we asked the respondents about two more hot issues. A controlled intersection at Glover Road and Ninety-sixth, and rerouting the commercial truck traffic out of Fort Langley. As you can see, people do see both as important issues, the majority voted five, particularly on rerouting the commercial truck traffic out of the fort. In the 2016 FLCA survey, ninety-five percent of respondents identified the heritage character of Fort Langley to be very important. So we asked, are you happy with the recent and upcoming commercial developments in Fort Langley? The majority of people were unhappy with the density of development, however, the majority did like the design and character of the buildings. We did find also that the majority were unhappy with the height and lot coverage of recent upcoming or proposed commercial developments. I'll turn this back to Solen for the final.
Well, the multiple-choice section gives us great statistical data, the written responses to this final section of the Vision Fort Langley survey clearly brings in the general sentiment and priorities of the community in great detail. Over a hundred and eighty thought-out comments strictly from the surveyed residents and business owners were written and submitted and analyzed by the third-party modus. We have broken down the comments into three important sections focused on transportation, development and character, public spaces and community events. These comments are directly summarized by modus with no edits. Provide more parking near the commercial core in the fort. Parking is especially lacking when there are visitors and film crews in the area. There are concerns that resident, sorry, residential parking spots are being used by visitors, and that there is a lack of enforcement on parking violations. This was the most brought-up issue in the written submissions and clearly has people very frustrated. Need safer intersections for cars and pedestrians, especially at Glover and Mavis, Glover and Ninety-sixth, and Glover and Billy Brown. Suggest more traffic lights, three- and four-way stops, and clearer pedestrian crossings. Reduce traffic speed, especially on Glover and Billy Brown Road. Buildings, oh, sorry, regarding development and character, buildings should retain the community's unique heritage character in terms of size, height, and facades. There are concerns that heritage buildings are being torn down, and some new developments do not fit the heritage character of the area. New development in businesses are too upscale and cater more to visitors than locals, which detracts from our small-town character. Regarding public spaces and community events, improve and provide more outdoor public spaces, green spaces... green spaces, and weatherproof seating. Upgrade civic buildings to be more conducive to community use. Host more community events and festivals, and integrate more arts and culture, especially emphasis on education on the First Nations history and culture. Here is the next feedback that came out of the comment section of the survey which, or sorry, with, is there anything else you'd like to see on the survey for next year? Transportation, greater focus on impacts and solution for parking issues, reduce vehicle and pedestrian conflict at intersections, and upgrade sidewalks. Improve and upgrade civic buildings, and more events and activities for the community. The results of the survey with three hundred and fifty-nine respondents speak loud and clear, and to communicate the community's needs, sentiment, and focus moving forward as the great community that is Fort Langley. A vision for Fort Langley must be an inclusive vision. A vision is created and made up of all members of the community. Communities have the capability of providing something for everybody only because and only when they are created by everybody. I again would like to thank Council and Mayor for allowing us to share with you the opinions of the community members of Fort Langley, as gathered through the Vision Fort Langley survey. The survey we have prepared is long and complex, and requires additional time with those interested to review adequately. We would encourage the opportunity to discuss the survey results further with Mayor and Council, and any Township Committee, including the Heritage Advisory Committee. We recommend and strongly encourage the Township moving forward to consider these results when making decisions for the future of Fort Langley and other communities throughout the Township. We look forward to working with the Township, and hope moving forward this community association and others with similar mandates continue to foster support as a value to the Township as a whole. This can include feedback from the Township regarding things they'd like to hear from the residents in the future, including tree bylaws, animal bylaws, or further questions pertaining to areas of importance to the community. Furthermore, we encourage these results to be shared to help prioritize the needs of Fort Langley as a walkable, vibrant, historic, and quaint village that is Fort Langley. Fort Langley cannot be replaced, and to move forward, it must encompass the needs of all the residents and business owners through inclusiveness, while honoring its heritage that makes it so desirable. We will be updating the survey annually to be current in the community's needs, and offer our surveys a nonpartisan method of engagement, as well as a voice for Fort Langley and other communities throughout the Township, as a method to continue the dialogue of community building. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I've got several councillors with questions, and thank you for that. It's nice to see that some of the things that we're working on are in your survey.
Accomplished.
Were accomplished, some were ongoing, and there's still lots for the future. It's certainly a never-ending in building a community, and thank you for all that work.
Thank you.
So I've got pretty much most of council wants to ask you something. Councillor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much. Now, was Glen Valley included in your survey this year?
It was.
It was.
So, we do hit all of the surrounding acreages, so that includes up in Forest Knowles and the areas in Glen Valley. Specifically to what length in terms of street, what's the furthest we go?
Two Seventy-second.
Two Seventy-second.
And the results that you've got, very, very interesting. Will the, will you be giving a copy to the clerk so that we can see the results?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the funding for this survey, I mean, I think this is extremely useful information to council, for council to have. How did you fund it this year?
Well, the fact that we grew by thirty percent this year, I think, just fosters the overwhelming support from both the community, but I also think it speaks loud and clear for the results that happened last year. And last year, there was much anticipation and hopes for sidewalks along Ninety-sixth, and as you're well aware, the Township supported that initiative, and I think that's wonderful in working together with the Township to accomplishing goals that are actually recognized by the community as needed.
Yeah, and I guess there was, there's been some requests to get funding so that you can carry on this particular initiative.
We had the pleasure of presenting with several community groups last week, and it sounds like the feedback was positive, and we look forward to hearing from the Township.
So if you were to get a Township of Langley Grant, which is the twenty-five-hundred, would you be able to use it? Would that cover the cost of this survey on an ongoing basis?
Absolutely. I don't have the financials in front of me, but I do believe that this survey cost us sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen hundred, very good. Now, in the answer-
Thirteen hundred dollars, I was corrected, sorry.
Fourteen hundred, okay. In the answers that had come out, that I guess modus had cross-tabulated, was there any cross-referencing in the findings between, because you had said at the beginning, you know, high percentage of people there are longer than twenty-one years, high percentage of people from one to five years. Was there any cross-tabulation in the results between those two categories?
If I understand you correctly, do you mean, is there any tabulation between the different types of residents reflective to the types of comments they made? Is that correct?
Yes.
I didn't personally analyze that, I think that's something that we could have modus do, but due to our limited funding, we also had to be cautious in how much money we spent with modus, even with their community support program. I just want-
Is there anything we can speak to that?
Yeah, I think that's about as clear as I could say. We would have the ability with additional funding to definitely break down the surveys and determine whether sentiment in the comments directly correlated to the residents.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I'm going, are the new residents finding more gaps than the older residents are?
My personal sentiment is that you definitely find some consistency between the newer residents and the elders, but in terms of actual statistical data that'd be relevant, that would be something that we'd have to use a third-party company to analyze.
Okay, and my last question is, I found the results on parking being a problem, probably not surprising, but seventy-two percent wanting more parking. Now, do they understand the impact of providing more parking on walkability? I mean, there is a trade-off there. If you're gonna build parking lots, you're gonna lose walkability.
Well, one thing I would like to say regarding the survey, I mean, the survey speaks for the residents and businesses alike, you know, and those are feelings and their sentiments and their, their goals, and that doesn't mean that we take a stance and say, well, do you know that this, this request comes with this? And that's part of the Township and Council's job in having public hearings and trying to accomplish goals as well. It's finding a balance of what the community really needs and what's viable. And, you know, in speaking about parking, you know, it's clear that this has been an ongoing concern in Fort Langley, and we recognize that as well. As a small community group, you know, we talk about identifying our goals through surveys. We recognize that this is something maybe that we can tackle on a small scale, while the Township can tackle maybe on a more meaningful, larger scale. And so for us, you know, we recognize that perhaps one of our goals this year will be educating residents and visitors of Fort Langley where the existing parking is, and helping navigate traffic better. You know, that's something on a small scale that can improve perhaps parking. But that doesn't address the core problem, and I think, you know, we've identified that with perhaps some concerns about outdated bylaws in parking that perhaps could be addressed, that although don't mean building more parking lots, but rather just moving forward to help address future developments and parking needs associated to.
Okay, and was there any sense of how much more parking is needed? Like a hundred stalls, fifty stalls?
Well, in terms of what's actually needed versus what's actually there, I think it would be important to know what's there. And I do remember a member of the FLCA actually going around Fort Langley and doing a count of every parking stall in the core, and if I'm correct in that count, it's a hundred and five.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Five.
And if you think about Cranberry Days and Festival Days, and as a resident of Fort Langley, and you think about all the wonderful visitors we have, you know, that take advantage of the Township's functions in Fort Langley, could you imagine a hundred and five parking stalls supporting it? And I think that's a number that, you know, really resounds to me, more so than how many more do we need.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Qualley.
Thanks, thanks for the survey, it's interesting information for sure. Can you go back to your slide on filming? That one just went by really quickly, and I-
For sure.
Sort of missed the statistics on that.
Off the top of my head, it's almost an even split, but let's pull it back up.
Twelve?
We'll get you there, just one second.
Sorry, thanks.
Number guys?
Twelve.
Maybe while you're looking for that, I'll ask another question.
Sorry, go ahead.
I think, you know, the parking, the parking perspective is really interesting, and obviously a hundred and five stalls don't support the Cranberry Festival, that's why they have to bus people in, and we've all been there and understand what that looks like. I would be really curious in your next survey if there was an opportunity to talk about people's appetite for paid parking, and in more enforcement around time-limited parking, because that's sort of, one of the potential iterations of additional parking, right, is looking at what, how to pay for that parking.
I think that would be a wonderful addition, and again, the fact that these questions, you know, revolve around solutions, I think part of actually speaking to the community and providing some options will help guide what the best solution is from a community standpoint.
Yeah, I think that, you know, paid parking and time-limited enforcement, there is time-limited parking, it's just the enforcement of that, yeah.
Enforcement, and enforcement was a word that did seem to come up.
Yeah, I mean, anybody who's circled trying to find parkings is, you know-
Is aware.
Yeah, has that same sentiment.
We're on that slide for you.
Talking about sort of the next steps for Fort Langley, I just wanted, I'm positive that you're aware of it, but Thursday night is the open house for the First Nation plans around their, their lodge ideas and the museum redevelopment, so I just wanted to make sure that that information had gotten to you guys, and you were aware that that was happening, and hopefully you're encouraging all your members.
It's actually being promoted on our page right now.
Oh, great, so good, hopefully that-
We try to engage the whole community with any event coming up that impacts Fort Langley.
Good. So the filming and slide, this is the one that I was interested in looking at, so yeah, I would be interested to know, oh, how, what that means from the merchant's perspective versus the resident's perspective, because you do have people there who are live-work, right?
Yeah.
So what that industry looks like from their perspective?
Yeah, and I'll speak just briefly to this question. Again, this wasn't actually on our first annual survey, and again, this is why the Fort Langley Community Association and all community associations are an open channel of dialogue for community members on both sides of the fence. And we had a presentation from an owner who lived in a residence and was being impacted by the film, and asked us, do you get feedback? And so we brought that question in, and that was an opportunity for businesses to share their impact as well. I think speaking to Councillor Richter's question as well, in terms of delineating who has the positive versus the negative, we could do that, but it would require some extra work. We'd have to go back through each handwritten survey and figure out whether a business owner or a resident, and then what they answered to that question, but it would be doable.
Have you had a chance yet to share the survey with the BIA and get their feedback around it?
We have not, this is actually the first official presentation of the survey to public.
And what was the survey period? Sorry if you said that.
We did the survey in summer, I believe it was in June, is that correct? Yeah, in June. And actually, for consistency, it was the same time we did it last year, and moving forward, in order to be consistent, we will intend on doing it at the same time each year.
So it was the month of June, two thousand seventeen?
Correct, yeah.
So it was before Plywood became a dominant facility in Fort Langley. Okay, thanks.
It, as I'm sure you're well aware with these volunteer groups, we all put in our time for free, and it takes time to compile a study, actually hand-deliver it, collect that data, and have it analyzed, and prepare a well-planned presentation to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you. Some of my questions have already been answered, but I just want to say thank you very much for coming and giving us the updated survey. I do think it's rather timely, as been mentioned, that this is coming around the same time, and some of the proposals that we're considering for Fort Langley are being addressed, and it's a really good opportunity for engagement. And I did notice that you put in quite a few top-of-mind things that I would say that are really relevant, so just to refer to the parking aspect, because I know that that's been discussed for some time. I would like to follow up on some of the comments to say that I think a parking study would be something that would probably be a good idea, if that were to progress to sort of a policy initiative, a resolution of council, because, you know, there's many things that I think that could be done to address that. Certainly, there's lots of new technologies and innovation, I'm thinking about a parking app, so that people that could come there might know what might be available, you know, we have ride-sharing, electric car and vehicle charging stations actually are a really good way to encourage people to come and stay, but for a limited time, as opposed to just a straight-out paying for the parking, so that may be also an option. I was also interested in the heritage aspects, in the kind of feedback that the community was given about the density and the guidelines, and the small-town feel, and things that are somewhat subjective in a way, but are tried to be captured by the heritage guidelines. I also think it's a good idea, actually, and I think maybe you or one of the other delegates, George, said this. Making a presentation, I think, would be a good idea to the Heritage Advisory Committee to talk about the survey and give them the feedback about what it is, because I think it's really quite significant that, I think it was three hundred and fifty-nine individuals had completed that survey.
That's correct.
So, so I think that that also would be a really good idea, and just, yeah, strong encouragement to get the community out there for our informational meeting on this week.
I really appreciate the feedback, and again, you know, three hundred and fifty-nine is, it's only relevant when you factor how small Fort Langley truly is, and when we talk about fifteen hundred homes, three hundred and fifty-nine responses is very statistically relevant.
Yeah.
Regarding your parking, I think this dialogue is exactly what's important. I think we can all agree that many of these problems are not one-year solutions or one-year problems, they're ongoing things. And when I see something positive, for example, where sidewalks was an issue last year, and then, you know, was addressed in a very positive way with council and mayor, and actually resulting that, you notice that that's no longer the main objective of the survey, or even the feedback, so you've accomplished something that's very positive. And in presenting this year's survey, as you mentioned regarding the heritage aspect and the parking aspect, these are things that have been top-of-mind for some time, and I think this is what's gonna facilitate actual solutions rather than more talk, so I would welcome any opportunity, and I think, you know, I can speak for the FLCA, that if there's additional questions that you want brought in, that would help bring solutions forward or help validate solutions that you propose, I think that's a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, Councillor Fox.
Thank you. Could you go to the slide, and I-
What's it about? And I'll try to guess.
It had two graphs, and one was the truck route slide, I can't remember the number.
Slide nineteen? Three, four. This one here?
Right there.
Yeah.
Perfect. Because we haven't, we had, council had come up with a plan. I mean, since I've been on this council, I think the number of surveys has been fairly ongoing, and we've always heard about the truck route. And council came up with a plan to work towards eliminating the truck route, and we haven't heard much feedback, to be honest with you, from the Fort Langley community as a whole. Do you like the idea? Don't you like the idea? So this is really the first kind of contextual response to that. So, the five, just to go over that then, what's the two, one, two, three, four, five? That's the fifth, the five would be the most important thing, they want to see us continue with our plans in that regard. Had the plans been before the survey came out, I think they were, if I'm not mistaken.
It, there was early discussion that this is what was going to happen, but at that point in time, the survey was already finalized, and that still doesn't detract from the, the representations that's in here. So for example, you just mentioned, this is the first sort of feedback you've heard from the community. Well, if this question wasn't on that survey, you wouldn't have any. So I still think it's valid, and I think the plan that you guys have put forward is a positive step.
Yeah, because we haven't really heard anything, and I think it's critically important that we know, I mean, obviously, it's important, but what's, what's the feedback? I mean, are people excited about it, getting it out of there, and the plan to remove it? And we haven't heard, hadn't heard much.
And again, if that's something that you would, and don't get me wrong, I think us as the FLCA, you know, hear a lot on the ground because we're in Fort Langley, and perhaps people find us an easy conduit to speak to. I've heard it loud and clear in the community, but perhaps that hasn't been relayed to council and mayor. But again, if you'd like to add questions to next years that you think are relevant regarding the steps that the mayor and council have made for rerouting the traffic, I think that's a wonderful step, and we'd be happy to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
You, and Councillor Long.
Yeah, I was hoping to get up first, because I might have just said-
Oh, not a chance.
I don't know if you want to dissect the entire thing tonight, because it's a very complicated document that you presented, and I appreciate it, and you gave us a quick overview with the slides, so just wanted to confirm, you've given a full copy to the clerk, so we can, we can sort of examine things a little bit more closely. But, you know, the popular topic is parking, and as you know, that's not unique to Fort Langley, it's an issue all over, but I would be very surprised if a survey result said that paid parking was something that everybody wanted. But anyhow, we'll see, but I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, and just be sure that we're gonna get a detailed copy that we can have a look at and get back to you on.
Thank you, Councillor Long, and you're right, I mean, some of the solutions may not be loved by all, but again, you know, when you make decisions for the community, you make the best decisions you can, you're not expected to please everyone, but at least bringing solutions forward is a step in the right direction. Regarding the presentation, all of the statistical data is being provided to Township, the comment section, we'd be happy to sit down and go over it, it's a long, detailed document.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing you all on February the eighth.
You got it.
That'll be, that'll be an exciting night.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.[1707.13] of the statistical data is being provided to township. The comment section, we'd be happy to sit down and go over it. It's a long, detailed document.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing you all on February the 8th.
You got it.
That'll be an exciting night.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Actually, I should mention, it's not just at night, it's the whole day, right? Starts, so there's plenty of time for people to pop in.
Counsel Whitmarsh, then Counsel Richter.
Thank you for coming today. Just a couple of questions. Maybe my first one, since this slide is up here. To get, are these, I forget as you went through your presentation, are these two that were identified as the most important items that came up on the survey that, or most critical items? Or how did these two come up here? Are they identified as the most important items? Were they part of a list of multiple choice that people would just check a box and say, "These ones are important to me"? Or how did we get these ones?
So, in this particular case, if my memory corrects me, or sorry, serves me correct, in this case, they had a selection between 1 and 5, and they checked the box. And then there was multiple questions pertaining 1 to 5 responses. And so, you'll see here number 5 being most important, 1 least important, and you can see the scale accordingly. So, they had the choice of 1 to 5 for this question. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah, yeah. That makes sense. I guess I'm wondering, like, we have two items here, Controlled Intersection of Glover Road, the rerouting commercial traffic. Were these items that people wrote in and identified that were important to them, or were these part of a list that they, that the survey provided for them, and then they checked off?
It mirrors the 2016 survey, so we duplicated our questions, and these were the two questions on there.
Okay.
For consistency. I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question 100% correctly.
Well, I guess I'm just, yeah, I guess I'm trying to get at how, it was a multiple choice.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
There's a list of items that the, that the FLCA came up with. Here's nine or 10 things that we think are critical issues, and would you rank them in order of how you think they're important?
I understand your question now. So, the survey itself was not all of the same format, and your question pertains to the format specifically.
Yes, it does.
So, some questions were, they're all essentially multiple choice, except for the comment section, but the format of the multiple choice is different, because some questions don't have 1 to 5 most important. For example, how long have you been a resident of Fort Langley?
Fair enough.
You have 1 to 5, 5 to 10, 10 to 15. In this particular case, or this segment of questions, was more about feeling of what's important versus least important. So, in this case, this question pertained to this format.
Right. Okay, so this is the second year of the survey. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
So, one of the things, as you go forward, and you get, you know, do this in each year, one of the things that would be helpful is to sort of discuss the change from one year to the next as to how these issues change. So, you know, 40% think this is the most important item, but the next year, only 30% do. That might demonstrate some progression as we move forward. That would be very helpful.
So, I actually really appreciate that question, because it's exactly in line with our objectives. We feel that three years is the beginning of a baseline, which is essentially what you're speaking to. So, next year's results will actually present a baseline showing the history over three years, and watching that sentiment through the community change. And that is absolutely our goal for, again, being consistent in who analyzes our data, being consistent in our questioning, but also being consistent in when we take the survey. And that way, the baseline is about as true as it can be.
Right, okay. And just my final comment I'd make around parking, and obviously, that's a challenging topic. What do you do with parking? You know, we would have examples of many other communities where they have lots of parking, and that's because nobody goes there.
Yeah.
So, you know, sometimes having a busy place and a place where it's hard to find parking is actually a sign of success and good things. It would be difficult to have enough parking to manage the Cranberry Festival, for example, which is such a significantly large event, very successful event. If you had enough parking to handle that event, you can imagine how much empty space you'd have the rest of the year, just sitting there. So, somewhere, I realize parking is an issue, and I've had lots of trouble parking there, too. But, you know, there's a balance. Sometimes having no parking is actually a sign of really good things and creates a great environment.
No, absolutely. And again, being nonpartisan in this is that you can appeal to everyone. I'm not saying that there's one solution that solves all problems, but recognizing that this is a concern in the community, and being open to finding solutions that do the best they can to support all aspects of the community, that's the goal.
Yeah, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Counsel Richter, and then Counsel Qualley.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, thank you so much for this input, and I'm glad to see that Fort Langley wanting to get commercial traffic out is going to be good for Fort Langley. But I did want to run a caution about unintended consequences, because Fort Langley's desire to see this happen has been interpreted by Walnut Grove as taking your problem from Fort Langley and putting it into Walnut Grove. So, I would hope in the future that consequences of recommendations to council might take into consideration the other communities as well.
And I think that's a wonderful thought, and I think we're all cognizant that, you know, every decision we make has a reaction. And I think that speaks volumes, you know, again, to our presentation last week with other community members, is that we're not just putting up our blinders and saying, "All we represent is Fort Langley," albeit the mandate of the FLCA is to represent the residents and businesses of Fort Langley alike. I think these community associations have made a tremendous effort getting together and sharing each of their concerns in the community, and working together towards solutions that also support each other's mandates. So, I actually think that we're connecting more than segregating.
You, Counsel Qualley?
You're welcome.
One last question. I did, and if it's an oversight, I'll apologize, but there was no question in here about public safety. And we hear a lot through residents and through social media about, you know, theft in different parts of our community. And so, is that, was there something in there, and I missed it, or?
Well, I mean, public safety is not just in the manner of crime. I think even crossing the street on 96th can be considered public safety, so I wouldn't say there was no questions. But to your question specifically, again, when we did the survey, it was in June, and it wasn't the hot topic at the time. But I have noticed in the past three, four months that there has been a very growing discussion around property crime in Fort Langley specifically. And I think that's very much going to lead towards a question for next year.
Presentation at our February meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We actually had somebody present at our FLCA meeting regarding public safety and moving forward to support that.
From the RCMP, or?
Coming up in our February meeting.
Coming up in our February meeting, yeah.
Sorry, the RCMP representing in February?
Coming up in our meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
All right. That covers all the speakers. Thank you very much for your presentation and for the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, next delegation, and the last one is Reading Projects Limited.
I brought a copy of my presentation when I'm speaking. I gave it to the clerk if the mayor and council wanted to follow along.
Okay.
Your worship and members of council, my name is Michael Anderson. I am the Director of Reading Projects LTD, the landlord of the current location of the Sharks Club Beer and Wine Store. My association with Reading has now stretched to 27 years, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We only recently were informed by Rising Tide Consultants on January 26, and like to respond as follows. When council of the day approved the rezoning of Thunderbird, they intentionally blocked competition to the existing liquor store on our site, 2016988th Avenue. It is ironic that Northland, who enjoyed this protection from competition for years, is now asking council to reverse it. We have over 40 signatures and letters from merchants around the site who would desperately assert to maintain the status quo. These letters can be shown to council on request. For many, for many of them, the liquor store represents an anchor tenant. Merchants around the site like our tenant mix. Mr. Hick mentions parking problems. We have 27% more parking than Langley would require if the site were needed to be approved today. Mr. Hick purports that the sales of the beer and wine store, and Mr. Thompson concurs, have declined and blames the property. With Northland Sharks Club Pub closing in 2015, and Oak and Thorn opening just two months ago in the same space, we can advise that the positive impact to the liquor store's sales will be substantial. To the point of new housing blocking visibility, or other buildings blocking visibility, or that visibility is even an issue, we respectfully disagree. Anybody who ever purchased alcohol in Walnut Grove knows about our location. In fact, this new housing's customers, being now within walking distance, represents an asset, not a liability. This liquor store has always been profitable. In an ideal situation, both locations, Thunderbird and ours, should be able to compete with each other. However, the 1-kilometer rule of the Liquor Control Board makes this impossible. Mr. Hick states Northland will definitely leave making it impossible for us to attract another license. While that remains to be seen. But here are some numbers. Market price for a liquor store license, which is not specifically attached to a location, is anywhere between $300,000 and $500,000. Market price for the liquor store operating in its current location is at least three times that much, 1.5 million or more, meaning Northland would actually be hurt by more than $1.1 million instantly or initially. Two years ago, Scott Thompson, who spoke to you today, asked Reading to buy this license from them, and stated, and I quote, "It is not our core business." While Northland subsequently changed their mind, we reiterate, it remains our intent, with our new tenant, Oak and Thorn, to buy that license of the store, or alternatively, we will grant Northland a long-term license to remain where it is. Finally, Mr. Hick and Mr. Thompson states that Northland will definitely leave Walnut Grove regardless if their application is not approved, and then asserts that in such an event, no liquor store will ever be allowed to operate from Reading's property. Yet, three months ago, we specifically told Mr. Thompson that if Northland moves, we would, as a last resort, purchase the license from Walnut Grove Liquor Store down the road and move it to our site. We do not see why council's time is being wasted on this issue. The owners of Walnut Grove Liquor Store firmly oppose Northland's application and the change to the status quo, and have shared with us their letter confirming that they would sell us their license, to move their license to our property in the event it is needed. We urge council to maintain the status quo, and cannot imagine that council would want to be the arbitrator and decision-maker of a commercial chess game. And I would like to read Walnut Grove Liquor Store's letter. Dear Mayor Fros and members of council, we are the owners of Walnut Grove Liquor Store at 2047088th Avenue, Langley in Walnut Grove. We are writing to oppose the application to relocate and expand the Sharks Club Beer and Wine Store to the Thunderbird site owned by the Sun Life Assurance Company. To grant such an application would amount to a catastrophic imbalance to the current competitive marketplace. By enriching one operator, mayor and council would injure another. We further understand that the applicant's consultant has indicated the applicant would leave the Walnut Grove area if their application is denied. If that should happen, we would seriously entertain Reading Projects Limited's offer to purchase our liquor retail store license, or joint venture with them in relocating our license to the site currently occupied by the proposed tenant at 2016988, which is Reading's lands. We respectfully request mayor and council to close this matter once and for all, and it's signed 786 Holdings LTD by one of the directors of that company.
Thank you. And Counsel Richter's question.
Yeah, I'm still confused about this two liquor stores existing in one, a 1-kilometer radius. So, are you saying that if they choose to go, then you would buy their liquor license for 1.5 million dollars? Is that what you're saying here?
That's what we're saying.
And if they did choose to go, the most they could sell their liquor license for would be 500,000?
If it was not attached to a specific site that was available, right now in British Columbia, there's very few locations where these licenses can go. There's lots of competition for them in the lower mainland. There's very few sites, and there's lots of licenses that are chasing that one property, if it in fact becomes available.
Okay, so, if you did purchase their existing license and move the Walnut Grove store into there, what guarantees do we have that you would stay there, or would you come back looking for rezoning to go where they want to go?
You're hearing it right here. We're making that commitment. We own the land.
You own the land. If you get the license, you're going to keep it there?
It will be attached to the land for as long as we can secure it for there.
Okay. And the last question I have, of course, I think the original application that they made where they got the beer and wine liquor license was before my time on council. Is there nothing in the current provincial framework that allows a grandfathering of some sort? It would seem to me, you've had that for, for what, 20 years?
That's right.
Don't you have protection on having had that for 20 years?
Uh, no.
No. So, it's both in the existing locations or one in your location?
That's right.
Okay. And you're not going to move it to the IGA?
Or as Northland purports to move it, to move it off our site to Thunderbird's site. But as we've pointed out, that's not satisfactory.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There's no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends the delegation portion, and we'll move on to...
I have a question.
Oh, to staff, certainly.
Okay, so, with request to this motion for reconsideration, does that now come up under other business?
To clarify, reconsideration or procedure by law would require notice. So, it could be another business as a notice of motion for the next meeting, but there has to be proper notice to council. So, reconsideration can't happen tonight.
And the other question I had is, under our procedure by law, isn't it a 30-day maximum? I mean, this was decided before 30, like, it's been longer than 30 days.
The community charter allows the mayor to reconsider for any reason within 30 days. Our procedure by law allows a member of council to move reconsideration, which needs to be seconded, and then approved by council by simple majority. And then it can be brought back on the table for reconsideration. So, that's in our procedure by law.
Okay. Now, I noted from the presentation made by Rising Tide and Northland Properties, their permission from the liquor board is, only runs 90 days, and they got that on November 27th. So, their 90 days is going to be up on February 27th. So, if we move reconsideration for the next meeting, that's not going to occur until when?
February 19th.
February 19th. And if we, if the reconsideration was successful, would they then have the opportunity to have it dealt with before the expiry of their 90-day period?
It could be dealt with that night, depending on council's direction. We're bringing back the bylaw and giving your first and second reading. And I've just been advised they could also seek an extension if that was to be council's direction.
Oh, they could seek an extension. Okay. I think that takes care of my questions. And, oh, and one more question. The comment was made that, about the housing development that went in in 2007 that has essentially blocked their view from the road. Do we have any record if the Shark Club or the Shark Club Liquor Store made positive comments in the public hearing relative to that 2007 public hearing?
Whatever comments we receive would be in the minutes of the public hearing for that time, so we could look up the minutes and see what's there.
We could look it up and get that information.
That's correct.
As part of the reconsideration then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I should add, if council wished to reconsider tonight, there would have to be a motion to waive that requirement in procedural by law, and that would require 2/3rds vote. Is that correct, Mrs. Bauer? Thank you.
No, but we could just put it on as a notice, a motion for the next meeting.
But I just want to advise that if it was to be tonight, it would need a motion that would require 2/3rds vote to waive the bylaw, just so everybody's clear. Counsel Long?
Well, your worship, I was going to say that we also have a policy that deals with delegations. When delegations come forward with even the most simple bequests of council, we have a policy that says that should be reflected upon until the next meeting, at least. Here, we've got mountains of information and different stories from three individuals. And I think that at minimum, it could be referred to staff, or at least referred to a future meeting. But making a decision tonight, I think, would be beyond wise.
No, it's...
And I think that our procedural policy covers that, rather than making, you know, a decision based upon, you know, three or four people speaking. You need to digest the information that's been presented.
And that request could be brought up in other business, or the notice for a reconsideration could be brought up by the Wednesday before the meeting to be proper notice. It doesn't have to be tonight. So, just so everybody's clear. Okay, thank you. All right. So, now we move on to, where are we here? Bylaws of first, second, and third reading. G1 is the Langley 2018-2022, five-year financial plan by law, development cost charge reserve fund by law, by law 5342, by law 5343. Could I have a motion, please, council? All the hands up. Counsel Arneson, second by Counsel Fox. Discussion. Counsel Richter?
I, given the new information we received tonight from the Willoughby Residents Association, and it seems to me they've put some very specific thought into road improvements that are needed in their area. And if, if we go with this by law tonight, we're essentially locking those improvements out for another year. So, I would like to move deferment of this by law, we don't absolutely have to do it tonight, to the next meeting, to consider the Willoughby Residents Association input, and to get a report from staff on the costs of each item improvement, walkability improvement item that they've requested, and what can be added to this year's budget.
Move deferral. Is there a second? I don't see a second.
You know what, I'm going to say that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just like to say, if we don't give them a chance, it's not often we get members of the public coming forward and saying, "We want this to be included in this year's budget." The Fort Langley Community Association did it last year with regards to the sidewalk, and we were able to accommodate them with the sidewalk on 96th Avenue. I do feel that the Willoughby residents should... I do feel that the Willoughby residents should have the same type of accommodation on this budget, because it's probably unfair to make them wait for another year to get any site, any type of relief for the concerns that they've raised.
Mr. Backen.
Thank you, Worship. We certainly understand the concerns and sentiments. The challenge at this point, though, would be, we could be holding up several million dollars of other projects for, for this issue, so then we must look within the budget to see if these issues could be accommodated. Each of the suggestions may have a lot of merit, but each will probably require a certain degree of study, but given the apparent scope of them, which seems to be sidewalks and crossings, I think that that would be possible to accommodate them within the existing budget, perhaps by, say, deferring other projects when the reports come back, or by simply trying to use contingency and surplus money depending upon the scope and scale. So council does have options to make sure that the issues are analyzed without deferring the budget, and it's up to council if they feel it's appropriate to defer the budget, but just a reminder that we do have a number of projects that are in the queue and waiting to proceed.
Okay, but didn't we pre-approve all the things that needed to be pre-approved last meeting? So there's really no need for us to rush this through right tonight. We could wait and get a report from staff on what could be accommodated.
So the preapproval was those things that we anticipated should be starting prior to 30 to 45 days from the preapproval. There's a number of other projects in the queue that we would like to start on. The analysis for each of the requests could take some time, it could take 60, 90 days, Mr. Seffy, what would you suggest? So again, that would push us well to the end of the envelope, which requires adoption of a budget by May. So again, our suggestion would be that if council wishes to proceed and review these, which certainly seemed to have some merit, is that we then do so and look for existing projects that would take priority over this, or also use reserves and surplus. We do have some windows, some funds that we could access upon council's direction if these become priorities.
Thank you. Council Qualley.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the deferral. I think staff have heard for the very first time, like council tonight, that these suggestions are coming from the Residents Association. The budget consultation process has been going on for a number of months now, including the whole public consultation piece, so I think if we were going to make significant changes to the budget, we would need to also send those changes out to additional public consultations. So this process has been going on for quite a while already, and yeah, I think there's lots of opportunities to consider the information they brought forward, but they didn't bring forward any actual recommendations, just suggestions that those were posit, or, you know, challenging areas for them. So, yeah, I, I'm not going to support the deferral. I think we need to move on with this, and there's lots of opportunities to address their concerns as we move forward, but we can't stop what we're doing and spin on a dime for just mid-budget stream.
Thank you. Council Long?
Thank you, Worship. I was going to repeat the same comment I made about the, the previous delegation. This is, again, a delegation request, and it's very valid. I don't think we have to hold up the budget to address those. I was going to suggest at the end of the meeting that this be referred to staff for report. It is an important issue to all of us for safety reasons and other anomalies that have occurred because of the Willoughby development, but to hold up the budget is, I don't think is required. Mr. Backen actually gave a good explanation that we have other resources, including council contingency, to deal with these things, so let's move the budget on, and, and we'll also get a referral, I would hope, at the end of the meeting, Worship, if you'll allow me to make it, on the, on the, the input from the delegation.
Thank you. Council Davis?
Mr. Backen, it was a timing issue of the, of the budget, and I think that clarified my thoughts.
Thank you. Council Fox?
Yeah, thank you. Just to, to recognize that any, any of these items would have to go under the additional 2018 budget items, which I think we voted on this afternoon, but more importantly, I think when council, when staff returns with a report, which undoubtedly they will, there may be some of these items which are already taken care of in one form or another, or with limited funds, we may be able to add them to an existing improvement in that area. So I think it's critical that we get the report back. I don't think we want to jump to conclusions here and assume that every one of these can be done in, in, in immediate order, so I won't, I won't support a deferral at this point in time. I'll support a staff report.
Thank you, and I appreciate council's remarks. I think it's important that we do move forward with G1, with the budget, and certainly the concerns are, are valid, but we do, this council has always had a reputation of looking at every issue thoroughly, because we're dealing with taxpayers' dollars, and, you know, the shotgun-type budgeting is not what we do. We do things thoroughly, we do things carefully, we get a report from staff, and then we fit it into budget, because everything we do is a trade-off if we, and so we have to be careful with that. So I, I won't be supporting this. I think there's time to look at this, and they're important, and we should look at them carefully. Council Richter?
Well, I, I think it's unfair. We may have been working on the budget, and staff may have been working on the budget for months, but we did only take it to the public within the last month for their input, and now we're getting public input, and, and we're saying, sorry, it's too late. If, if that's what we're saying...
Point of order? Point of order?
No, it's okay.
It's not a point of order. I have the floor.
That's all I said.
If, if what we're saying is, we're, we've done all our work, and sorry, your feedback's coming a little too late, then that's not fair. We need to change the way, the timeframe, the period of time, whatever, that we get public input if we genuinely want public input. I believe what we received tonight was genuine public input. And the other thing is that we pre-approved a list of things. We can certainly pre-approve another list of things if there's anything that's really outstanding, but we don't have to have this budget passed until May. It's only February, the beginning of February. So the, the timing, I'm, I'm not quite in agreement with the need to rush this through without looking at what Willoughby wants first.
No, I appreciate that, and we're not rushing this through. This is something that's been taking a lot of time for council to get to this point, and it's ongoing. The budget for 2019 will be ongoing all the way through 2018. We'll be looking at projects, and as Mr. Backen stated, there are opportunities, once we've analyzed these projects, that if council so desires to move forward with them, that funding may be able to be found from other sources. So we're not rushing this through. This has gone through a very thorough, long process, and these are new items, new information. I think they're great, but we'll look at them thoroughly and with caution as we do with all of our taxpayers' dollars. Council Fox?
Yeah, I, I completely disagree with, with Council Richter's context of their statement that we, we are not valuing the input we got tonight. In fact, we are valuing the input. We're, we're looking at this and doing our due diligence. In fact, the 24th Avenue is a prime example of, of a citizen who came forward in November, first meeting in November, made the presentation, and you know what? Happily included in the budget and was able to provide the response. The other is the backhorse countryman who did the trail on two, on 8th Avenue. That, you know, when you bring something to the table at the 11th hour and 59th minute, I'm not sure that you can expect that everything stops when we've got the momentum in, in a way that we have with the, with the budget. And I will remind council that of the vote this afternoon, which was split, which was divided. I chose, I was the only one that said, "Don't divide it," but there was division, and there was counselors that voted against the additional items. Now we're adding additional items. So there's a bit of a hypocrisy there in terms of how that is all unfolding. So let's get staff, and I believe that our staff heard this delegations. I believe that they got a list here. We won't be able to accommodate necessarily every one of them, but I think our staff are very capable of addressing a couple of them, working towards resolution, and it may be a very simplistic and not even a dollar figure that we need to do that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I would add to that, I think that the, you know, there's many items that we have in this community of sidewalks, or crossings, or other kinds of safety measures that could be taken, all sorts, all, all throughout the community. And just to hear them today, they're, they, the pictures are quite evident that there's some areas that probably could be addressed, but they need to be, I think, looked at in terms of the cost of those things and how they compare to the other items in the community that need to be fixed and done, and just because a group comes tonight in one night that we didn't all of a sudden change the whole budget direction that has been going for three months. I think that some of those items, as staff has said, could be dealt with in, in the, in the budget in some way. Other items might be put forward as part of a 2019 process. If we had had a different group come forward today with their items, then we would, would be jumped to their, to their list. So I think proper, proper management means we go through a good process. It's very helpful information. I think we're taking the information serious, and we'll see from staff how we can maybe address some of those items, and some of those items might become part of the 2019 process. So I won't be supporting the deferral because of that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I've seen that. I'm going to call the vote on the deferral. And the deferral fails with Council Fox, Council Arneson, Council Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Council Qualley, Council Sparrow, Council Davis, Council Long opposed. Back to the main motion, and there's a speaker's list still. Council Long?
No, I'm good.
The main motion. Council Davis on the main motion.
Sorry.
Okay. Any, Council Richter on the main motion?
Yeah, I had a question now. This afternoon, we did break out the 1.95% tax increase from the additional 0.52% tax increase. Can that be done for this particular by law? Or if voting in in favor of this by law includes the full 2.47% tax increase?
Ms. Sinclair, if you could explain the by law for Council Richter?
The by law, as it's written currently, includes the 2.47.
And so there's no way to break out the 1.95, because as I said this afternoon, and I will reiterate again tonight, I do believe the 1.95 is reasonable, but given the very large property assessment values that homeowners, especially in the rural and suburban residential areas, have been hit with this year, I don't think 2.47 is a fair increase for them. So how do we break out the 1.95 and the 0.52?
So Karen, 5.5342 would contain the rate increase. 5343 is DCCs, so we're looking strictly at 5342. To break that out at this point would likely...
So, so Mr. Backen, would it be that the by law could be divided, and that 5342, if Council Richter so chose, she could make an amendment to remove the 0.52, and then council could vote on it, and that's the way to break it out?
That's one option, Your Worship.
And, because it's difficult to do any other way than I can see. So right now, G1 is on the table. If there's a motion to divide the two bylaws?
Divide.
Okay. So is there a second or the motion to divide? Council Qualley moves division. So now we'll deal with 5342, and Council Richter, you still have the floor, did you wish to make an amendment?
Yes.
Don't we have to vote on the division?
Oh, sorry. All those in favor of division? Thank you, Council Fox. Opposed? Council Long's opposed, Council Whitmarsh's opposed, Council Fox is opposed, so we'll go with division. Carrie, so now with 5342, Council Richter, if you wish to make an amending amendment motion?
Yes, I, I wish to amend by law number 5342 to set this year's tax increase at 1.95%.
Is there a second to that? I see no second. So now we'll move with the, any other discussion on 5342? Council Long, did you wish to speak to 5342?
Oh, yeah. I mean, when this concept first came up, the commitment to infrastructure, a number of years ago, I, I took some issue with it too, but the fact is, it's a bit of a fool's game we're going to play if we don't put money aside to, to protect the future infrastructure, infrastructure, and we're also talking about a commitment to protective services. So as much as we'd love to keep the, the tax increase as low as possible, I think we're going to pay sooner or later, so I'm afraid that it's something that, that we would do in your own household. You have to put contingency away, you have to protect your assets, and so therefore I'd be supporting the way it's shown at 2.47.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Fox?
Yeah, I, I ran, and I've run for four elections on protective services and the importance of protective services, and here we're actually voting tonight on whether we should add four RCMP officers. We had a question, actually, of the FLCA about community safety issues. We hear constantly, and it's amazing, actually, the Willoughby Community Association people didn't bring that up. We hear it in Brookswood. I think it's absolutely critical in a growing community that we respond to the needs of that growing community in terms of protective services. It's, it's a small step. Four officers means one officer per shift, but it's a step in the right direction. I think if we don't do this, we're going to find ourselves in a bigger hole come, come years to come, when we're actually going to have to fill a greater number of, of RCMP positions to try and meet the growing demands of this community. We're growing at a tremendous rate. I think it's probably close to 800 to 1,000 people a month, and we need to keep those new, those communities that are growing protected. And we hear constantly about the issues of Willoughby. We heard it from Inspector Powers himself, Superintendent Inspector Powers?
And I...
Yeah, himself, in his, in his quarterly report, that the issues in Willoughby need to be addressed, and that's why he's requesting these additional officers. I cannot support us not putting those four officers in our community.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, for me, the, the 0.52% certainly deals with protective services, and that's, I think, critical, and this, as this community grows, that we continue to support protective services. But secondly, in, as, for this areas, the area of homeless, the, the issue of homelessness, one of the primary areas and ways that we have dealt with homelessness and contributed towards working through the homelessness issue is through the Gateway of Hope, and this 0.52 contributes to that. This is a, one of our, it's really our primary way that we have worked towards dealing with the issue of homelessness in our community, and I think it's a, it's a critical issue that we stand up and, and protect and work towards helping those people, that are most vulnerable in the community. And to throw that away, simply because we, we would like to throw another item in or something, I think is a serious mistake. We're often judged as governments and by people by how we treat those who are most vulnerable, and I think this is critical that we include that. And the final area on this is that, is some, for the expansion of some of the recreation areas and treating each of the areas of our community equally. And so this has, moving the hours of a recreation facility, in this case primarily in the Brookswood Fernridge area, where some of them, they don't have some of the same recreation facilities, to at least have similar hours of time for those residents to use it. So this, this is in support of those people that live in Brookswood Fernridge, it's in support of the homeless community, and it's in support of the protective services. So it's absolutely, we need to move forward on this budget change.
Thank you. Council Qualley?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree completely with what Council Whitmarsh is saying. I mean, a 0.5%, 0.52% increase is a dollar a month. A dollar a month. For a dollar a month, if somebody told me I could get four RCMP, fund the Gateway of Hope, and have, take some responsibility for the homelessness situation, help improve our airport, which is a massive economic driver in this community, as well as improve our stormwater, our parks, our transportation, for a dollar of month, I would be happy to write that check every single week, never mind every month. So for me, not supporting this is just not even a consideration. I can't imagine providing our community with better value for a dollar a month, ever.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Well, the base budget with the 1.95% increase, actually, the vast majority of that 1.95, 1.03, is going under general tax to protective services. So we're already putting money into protective services within the 1.95. Now, all these add-ons that have come in, including the RCMP officers, is going to add another $167,000, and, but those officers aren't going to start until October 1st. And if the RCMP adding officers continues as it has in the past, often they get approved for these positions, they can't get the people to fill the positions, the positions stay vacant anyway, and those monies end up rolling over into surplus. So if we want something to be done, it should be included in the base increase, not as an add-on. The airport, well, excuse me, the airport is supposed to be self-sufficient, self-funding, and self-stand-alone. I do not understand why we need to add two jobs and pay for two jobs for maintenance, fueling, and office support. They should be paying for that themselves out of the revenues that they generate at that airport. I agree, the recreation extended facility hours would probably be useful, as is the Gateway of Hope, but unfortunately, these things are packaged the way that they are. And my argument is, was, and will be, we should make sure the development pays for itself, that when we start a budget, what's council is first given, which was the 1.95, is what we stick with, and, and we haven't done it in this case. So... 1.95, is what we stick with. And we haven't done it in this case. So they're unwilling to add in necessary protections for Willoughby, but they're going to add these in, and I don't think it's fair. So do one or the other, but not both. Because it's not a 1.95% tax increase, it's a 2.47% tax increase.
Thank you for that. It is a 2.47% tax increase. 1.95%, as we all know from our workshops, keeps the lights on, keeps services the way they are. RCP have asked for some additional personnel, and this Counsel has agreed to it. And the additional hours for the recreation centers are certainly to improve services to our residents, and that's above and beyond keeping the lights on. Looking at, saying it's just for Willoughby, it's not, it's for the township of Langley. This township is growing, and we need to put money aside, as we are in our contingency funds, to save for the future, so we don't have to have 5% and 6% and 10% tax increases that I see in some of our neighboring municipalities. We're being very prudent with our money by putting a little bit aside each year, and that's what the 52 does. It adds policing, it helps the homeless situation by continuing to fund a very, very worthwhile organization in our community, which does so much work for us, the Gateway of Hope, that we're reaching out and funding them, because we lost the revenue source from gambling, from casinos, and we don't have the luxury of a casino in this municipality, which provides a lot of money to some other municipalities. We have to dig deep and stretch and work hard to even get a 2.47%. This is really a base budget. And I would certainly ask Counsel to support this, because you're supporting crime prevention, you're supporting recreation for our families, and you're supporting homelessness alleviation. And this is an important budget. So by saying it should be 1.95, yeah, we could have minus 1.95, but we're going to be cutting out a lot of services. So stick a number on it, 1.95, keeps the lights on, 0.52, add some of the very, very necessary items that we need in this municipality. And Counsel Fox, you want to have the last word?
Yeah, the only thing that I would add to that is the fact that, you know, for this Counsel, I mean, we received a budget document that was about this thick. And that budget document had an abundance of projects in it. And we cut out substantially, a substantial number of those projects. Now we get somebody coming, as we did tonight, and seeking to get their projects preferentially placed above those ones that we cut out. And it just doesn't make sense. We need to work with the budget as a whole. Our priorities were dealt with a long time ago, and this is what came out. I can't see us, all of a sudden, going back, revisiting that whole document and figuring out where everything should fit at this point in time. We've feted this out ourselves, with the public, and it's time to move on.
Thank you. And I'll call the question on G1, the first part, bylaw 5342. And the motion carries. Counsel Richter opposed. Move to the second part of G1, that's bylaw 5343. Any discussion on 5343? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. Move on to G2, user pay utility rates bylaw for 2018, bylaw 5344 and 5345. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, second or? Counsel Davis, discussion on G2. Seeing none, I'll call the question on G2. Carries unanimously. Move on to G3, this is Facility Capital Works Loan Authorization, bylaw 2018, bylaw, sorry, 2018, bylaw 534246. Counsel Long, second or? Counsel Sparrow, discussion on G3. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, I just had a question, Your Worship, through to staff. On the topic of the Langley Events Center Rena Bowl, is it possible that you could just remind us of what the, it talks about additional seating, what exactly is the number of additional seats, and are these the same-style armchair sort of seats that we currently have in the LEC?
Sorry, Counsel, Your Worship, I can answer that. Generally speaking, I think, an apology is to Counsel that the background was put together a long time ago, before we got too far into the process. But generally speaking, the seating, for those of you who've been on Counsel almost 10 years since we opened the event center now, we've done phased seating throughout the whole project. This is one of the final areas to be filled in and completed, with a focus on twofold, on enhancing the experience for our residents and our visitors, and also enhancing revenue opportunities. The additional seating provides some additional small group spaces. So if you were to bring a group to an event, it provides an area. Focuses a little bit on local small business tables. So Counsel will know we have suites that hold between 10 and 24 people. It provides some seating areas for groups of four to six, which is something we've heard back from a lot of our local Langley small businesses, that they like to be able to buy suites for. Some rentable space, and some final tiered seating on the west end, on the fourth floor of the west end. So it's no seating down in the bowl, as far as kind of regular seats, it's all specialized seating areas.
Okay, thank you. One other question, through to staff, through the Worship. The borrowing costs on this indicates $70,000 borrowing cost. Is that something that is currently sitting in the 2018 budget? Is that showing in there now, along with the principal and interest payment of the 492?
Through Chair Two, Counsel Whitmarsh, yes, it's currently in the 2018 and 19 budget. It's straddling the two years, because we likely won't get to the position of needing to make a payment until very late in 2018, and possibly not even until 2019. But the budget for it is currently reflected in the 2.47.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Richter?
I wanted to speak about both this bylaw and the next bylaw at the same time, so 5346 and 5347, which in total equates to $19.95 million in new borrowing. And I have a concern about going after new borrowing, because that's just saddling of future generations of taxpayers to pay back. And I know, on the one hand, the cost of borrowing now is relatively low, it's attractive. But on the other hand, this all relates to development not paying for itself. We wouldn't be borrowing this money if development was paying for itself, which, again, speaks to what I consider to be a concern in the budgeting process that we use right now. So while the monies are going to be used for worthwhile activities, and some activities that we don't have any say over, because the federal government has ordered us to fix railway crossings, I object to coming up with these monies through borrowing. I don't think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Any further discussion on G3? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, I saw one just pop up. Counsel Arnison?
Sorry, last-minute thoughts. I do have some concerns myself. I know that cumulatively, when we start talking about, I think for me, when we first started our budget discussion this year, it was under somewhat of a different premise, which is, we are getting to the point, in terms of our development, that for a variety of reasons, from external sources as well as for community need, we are having to have an outlay of capital. That has not been the case in the past. And it does seem to create a situation in which we are, for a variety of reasons, now put in a position to actually borrow money. I guess, somewhat different to Counsel Richter, if I look at the next proposition, I don't think in some cases, we have any ability to say no. Because if it's something that's mandated by the federal government for safety, for railways, those kinds of things, then I really don't see that we have an opportunity to defer this in any kind of way. However, I do think we should be very careful about discretionary costs. And it is the case that a lot of these things are very compelling. I don't think anybody would want to say no to them. But it does create a situation, I think, in which we do have to ask ourselves, if this is a direction that we're going, can we at least figure out ways to ameliorate it in some way, or to make it so that, I would prefer, actually, like some budgetary items that we have, if staff is looking at this and saying, this is critical, this is medium priority, this is low priority. Because then at that point, I might, and I'm likely hampered by the fact that I'm not acutely aware of what all of these costs are for G3. So perhaps that would have been helpful to have another report attached to it at this time. Anyways, so for those reasons, you know, I really do strike a cautionary note, to say that, however viable these things might be, that we do have to consider, one of the things that we have to take into account is risk management. And I know we like to think that things are always getting better, you know, but most people I know refer back to times when suddenly everything tanked. And so we do belong to a society that tends to want to overextend themselves collectively. So I think we have to be very cautious about that, and make sure that the things that we are approving are things that actually have an impact from a business plan point of view, that we can be certain of that this is going to, you know, to meet the needs without overextending ourselves.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'm fairly conservative fiscally personally, and I think it makes me nervous to think about laying out that much money and borrowing that much money. But 2/3 of that expense is really out of our control. It's being mandated federally around the railway crossing upgrades, and we have no choice. We have to comply with the regulations, and so 2/3 of that money, we can't, isn't truly discretionary. The rest of the money is somewhat discretionary. It's, you know, timing related to different activities happening here in the municipality, and other things that we've already committed to, like Mr. Winslet said, around the LEC, and our facility repair and improvement. And I think part of the reason we end up in a situation now in trying to make up ground on things like our infrastructure maintenance, and, you know, having some sort of contingency in place, is because we defer things, and defer things, and defer things. This way, if we just sort of bite the bullet, pay for it now, then we'll reap the benefit of that investment later. I think it's expensive to continue to defer, and we have to play catch-up at some point. So while I wish we didn't have to be in a situation to borrow, I think we have to be realistic about what the money's being used for, and the fact that 2/3 of it isn't discretionary. So I'm going to support the borrowing investment.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I don't think we defer too much in this town. I think we actually spend above our means too much.
Thank you. Okay, I see no further discussion. I'll call a vote on G3. G3. All we're doing is G3 right now. Carries with Counsel Arnison, Counsel Richter opposed. We go to G4. Any discussion on G4? Yeah, well, we had a lot of discussion on G4. Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. And G4. Carries, Counsel Richter opposed. Move on to bylaws for consideration. Third reading, H1, rezoning and community plan amendment, application 100157, and development permit applications, 100823, 100863, bylaw 5332, bylaw 5333. Counsel Qualley moves, second or? Counsel Fox, discussion on H1. There, it lights up. Counsel Arnison?
Yes, thank you, Worship. I just wanted to comment, I guess briefly about this, and bring forward some points that I have deliberated about myself. I think this is a very innovative and interesting way to go forward in terms of aging in place. However, listening to some of the community concerns, as well as reading the staff report rather thoroughly, I did come up with some things that made me question whether or not I could be as supportive of this proposal under the current circumstances. So I just want to itemize that, basically, the parking issue is a problem for me. I think that the comparators that I understood from the staff report were that the, it was going to be built, the reference, actually, I thought was to a community that had adequate transportation, which we currently don't. I think we're very much underserviced for that area. And also, there was questions in my mind about, because it's a phased operation, that, you know, there was some question mark as to the future phases, and what that would look like with respect to age restrictions and other components. And I also was wanting to see a clear indication that these kinds of services, we've talked a lot about affordability lately, and I guess it's not fair to say to the proponent at this point, well, where is some affordable housing for our seniors? However, I don't know at what time we're going to have that conversation, if, in fact, we're looking to provide that. We have lots of information in our housing action plan, and I think that this is the opportunity that we have to look at the growing demographic of seniors, many of whom are on limited incomes. And I see an opportunity from a developer who seemed to be very passionate about the fact that it wasn't about the money, but there is no affordability component. And my final comment is that I, as an alternate, go to some meetings that have to do with Fraser Health, and the long-term prospects of an expansion of our hospital, which, when I brought the topic up last time, seemed to be a non-starter. So I do have serious concerns about the potential for increasing the number of seniors with potentially seriously health-related problems coming to this area without having an adequate base for them to get the necessary service. So I won't be supporting this, although I appreciate the efforts of the developer. And if it goes forward, I look forward to having further more robust discussions regarding all of the above.
Counsel Long?
Thanks, Your Worship. When it comes to the parking, I, but I thought I heard the proponents say that because it's phased, they could look at, in the next phase, how they may have addressed the parking issue or may not have. So the question I would like to ask through you to staff, is it possible, seeing all this fair bit of property there, and this is only phase one of several phases there, is it possible to maybe have more parking involved in this phase, and then it can be adjusted the other way if need be? Because I think I have to agree with some of the comments I just heard from Counsel Arnison, that the comparators that they used talked about some areas that do have a much better transit service than unfortunately we have at the moment here in the township, especially in that area. So would that upset the apple cart too much if we added a prerequisite that the parking be increased, and maybe even on just a temporary basis, or at least on this phase, knowing that it could be adjusted in a future phase?
Mr. Seifi?
Your Worship, the first phase of the current proposal is actually proposing an amendment to the parking requirements of the township zoning bylaw, only in one area. And that is for units that are greater than 70 square meters in size, from what we currently require in the zoning bylaw for 1.5 unit, sorry, 1.5 stalls per unit to one per unit. And to respond to the question from Counsel Long, it is, the proposal has been the subject of years of discussions and negotiations, and the variance is being supported by staff, and has been discussed at length, and the proponents are unable to accommodate anything more than what is currently being proposed within that existing building. It is possible, however, as part of future phases and subsequent billing applications, development permit applications that will come forward, that there will be an offer of more than what the bylaw requires in terms of parking. But to make that a requirement of the current project, the current proposal, I believe the project will not be able to sustain that.
Okay, well, that helps. Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I just have to get back to my section here. I got sidetracked on something else. Where is it? I'm sorry. Maybe I pulled it out.
Let me come back to you?
Yeah, you can come back to me.
Oh, you got it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so a question that I have around this is, does this application, which is basically a rezoning for seven buildings, ranging in height from four to 20 stories, and I understand that four of the seven buildings will be 20-story buildings, does this application include a pedestrian overpass to the LEC as a condition? include a pedestrian overpass to the LEC as a condition?
Your Worship, it does not.
Okay, where would I add that?
Uh, if that was something that council wished to include, it would have to be an additional prerequisite, Your Worship.
Okay, I'd like to add an additional prerequisite that these, this rezoning application includes a pedestrian overpass to the Langley Event Center.
So the motion to amend, seconded by Counselor Davis, so I just opened up. Counsel Richter, you moved it. Do you wish to speak to it?
Uh, yes, I think it came out that one of the advantages of putting it in this location was its close proximity to the event center and how, you know, seniors would be able to walk over there and see events or use recreation facilities and so on. My concern is, and I believe it was raised at the public hearing, is that how can they safely walk across 200th Street, which right now in that area is about six lanes wide? So the idea of having a pedestrian overpass in there, particularly as it will eventually be accommodating seven buildings of four to 20 stories, makes a whole bunch of sense. So that's why I think it should be included as a condition.
Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, I, so just for clarity purposes to start with, so the rezoning here, application is for the seven buildings with heights ranging, ranging from four to 20 stories, and in the changing of the zoning to accommodate that. And then we have the specific bylaw associated with the first phase of that. Is that correct, Mr. Backen?
Uh, Your Worship, yes, the zoning, the zoning encompasses the entire site, and council is actually considering a development permit for the first phase, which consists of the first building, which is a 20, 20-story building.
Correct. Now, the context of an overpass, I think, has, has value, because we are building a secondary school there and so on and so forth, and access will be, will be important for a variety of different elements of, of this particular area to move from the west to the east. So I'm thinking, you know, rather than a condition of the first building, we make it a condition of, at some point in time, and maybe it's a little further along in our development permit process as opposed to just for the first building, maybe it's for the, by the completion of the third building or something like that, that we make this a condition as, as this progresses. I think the overpass has value. We've seen the one down at 64th Avenue, and I think this particular one could again have inherent value for a variety of reasons. So I'm just not sure how to phrase it so that we don't make a condition of this development permit, but maybe as the pro, as the project progresses, how, I, I mean, so I, I, I guess I'm not going to vote for this particular one, but I don't know how to include it a little further along in the, in the process.
Counsel Backen?
Worship, it could be a separate amendment, or there could be an amendment to this amendment, or permitted to have one amendment to an amendment. We can't stack the amendments more than that, so Counselor Fox's option would be to amend this amendment to clarify when this should occur, or separately, if that should fail, the alternative would be to add a separate amendment later to suggest that there be this condition that would exist at the triggering event.
Counsel Fox, or it could be done at another, at another time.
Okay, well, then we could, all right, we could add it at a later time. Okay, fine, I, I understand, and that, that's, okay, so I'll leave it alone right now.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Well, adding a few more parking spots is going to kill the project, and overpass is certainly not going to help the situation, is it? So maybe I could ask, if staff have been working on this, and they have, and the whole area is coming forward for development, what plans to cross 200th Streets exist currently, and how can we mesh these together so that we can share that? Because there's going to be more than just this development that's going to use an overpass, don't forget that goes both ways.
Mr. Seifi?
Uh, thank you, Worship. There are not any plans for pedestrian overpass at this location, and even though it was considered the proximity to the existing signalized intersection at 80th Avenue, which I believe is, is about 400 meters, was one of the reasons that it was not considered, and as well as the, the significant cost involved and relatively low, I guess, volume of pedestrian usage. And I guess, yeah, that is, that is the comments that I could offer at this point.
So the, the cost would be pretty immense, as well as acquiring land on each side to, to accommodate it. So it's a big project. I don't know if it can fairly be tagged on, on right onto here. I, I hear the concerns from that side of the table. But I've also seen, you know, events downtown Vancouver where, where if there's a big event at the event center that includes a lot of folks from there, there's crossing guards, there's other ways that the intersection can be improved. Are there intersection improvements planned then for that, that crossing that would improve the safety of it? Right now, there's nobody on the other side, so no wonder it's a little bit dangerous. Yeah, I mean, perceived to be dangerous.
Certainly, yes.
Right.
So, Worship, I would encourage us to maybe look at that as a separate issue, and it's, and it's going to be the entire west side of 200th Street from 80th and, and south that's going to require some studying and, and looking at sidewalks and other improvements to get across 200th. But I don't think, as I said in the beginning, if we can't add, you know, 40 or 50 parking spots, how can we add, ask them to put a whole overpass over there? So I would see that, my encouragement would be for myself to vote against the amendment, but to keep the thought open in terms of crossing of 200th Streets and safety issues in that respect.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. Yeah, I can support the amendment, I mean, without knowing how much it costs and if the municipality can even accommodate an overpass in that area is something that would have to be discussed before we put the cost of the overpass, whatever that is, on the proponent. There's also a potential unintended consequence with this overpass. The visitors that are attending hockey games and events at LEC might start parking at Maples and walking across the overpass to access LEC. So that could further impede the parking that they've already got planned over there. So I think I would support looking at it in a future piece of this development, but I can't support it now without having a whole lot more information. So no, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, and this, talking about this cross walkway and pedestrian walkway, is it possible for us to use DCCs for either a pedestrian walkway or an improvement of the intersection at 80th?
Mr. Seifi?
Yes, Your Worship, 200th Street is identified as a DCC road, and improvements associated with it will be, either the cost will be borne through the DCC program or recoverable as part of the developer's DCCs payable.
Right, so as these, this property gets developed by this group and as they put up seven potential buildings, the DCCs could be fairly substantial and could certainly provide a significant contribution towards those things as needed. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship, and perhaps I can just use this opportunity to make a couple of other comments regarding pedestrian overpass that we've constructed at, I think, 66th Avenue. I believe the cost was around $3 million, and I believe it was cost shared 50/50 with the province, so we didn't have the opportunity to, or the ability to fund that ourselves had it not been for the provincial grant.
Great, then, yeah, that information is really helpful. I think based on the DCC program we have and the fact that it probably needs to be cost shared, I think at this point I won't support that amendment today.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Um, Mr. Backen, is it better to put something like this as a condition of rezoning or as a condition of a development permit? It would seem to me it doesn't really meet a condition of a development permit.
As it's dealing with a dedication resulting from the use as opposed to the form and character, it's probably more appropriate to be done at the rezoning stage. One suggestion I was going to make, though, depending upon the outcome of this, is there are some low-cost alternatives that might assist to reserve this option in future. So for example, depending upon what council does with this, if it's unsuccessful, it might be prudent to make a condition that the land be reserved and dedicated for the footprint for an overpass in future. We know we have the LEC side, but then that can be preserved so that if there was money available from grants or otherwise, it could then be achieved through that, that mechanism.
Okay. And I appreciate Counselor Fox's comments relative to maybe it's not fair to saddle the first building with this. So I'd be willing to entertain a, an amendment which says that it be done by the third 20-story building. I mean, the point is, we don't have 20-story buildings anywhere else in Langley. There's going to be a lot of people living there, and one of the things that's going to attract them to living there is the proximity to the Langley Event Center. And, you know, putting off things like this, instead of tagging them to the impetus that's going to create the need, putting it off to some future council, some future budget, leads us to the problems that we get into in budgets, where we don't have enough money to do everything that we have to do, so we end up increasing taxes or increasing our borrowing. So I, I think we should start right now, we should have started a long time ago, by saying, think about the implications of four 20-story towers right there, and deal with it now at the rezoning. So I would like to propose an amendment to my motion, which is to include a pedestrian overpass to the LEC, uh, to be built with, on reserved land, reserved dedicated land by the completion of the third 20-story building.
The amendment would be to reserve, the amendment to the amendment, would be to amend the amendment to add, the words, to reserve the necessary land required for pedestrian overpass, and as I understand it, to, to attach it to the third building, the third tower?
And to complete the building by the time the third tower is built.
Okay, so that's the amendment to the amendment. Is there a seconder to that? Counsel Arneson seconded it. Put up amendment two. Is it Counselor Long? Discussion?
Well, my thought would be that we would refer this to staff for ramifications. I mean, it's just, it's popped out of nowhere, but, you know, it's an interesting discussion. I would, I would maybe be more interested in what the final phase might look like before an overpass is built. So I think I'm going to move that right now. I'm going to move that we defer this to staff for some advice on how this can be put forward. Other options that we talked about in terms of safety crossing 200th Street, there must be some existing plans that we need to talk about and other safety improvements, who's going to pay for DCC program, et cetera. So rather than trying to decide it right now, I'd like to move that deferral and, and it'll come back at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Oh, it's been seconded. Excuse me.
No, it has been?
So the, the deferral is to, is to refer this to staff to come back with some information on traffic or pedestrian mitigation across 200th, whether it be an overpass.
Yeah, we're talking about crossing 200th Street, right? So that's, that's what, we're going to come back with some information about that.
Your Worship, I think we have the information on the traffic. I, I think we're referring this perhaps for the cost of the structure and the implications, which Mr. Seifi can speak to now, but it depends upon what council's objective is with the deferral, because we're deferring a complex for pedestrian movement, which is a bit unusual. It certainly can be done.
Okay. Okay, so Counsel Long has moved it, and did you wish to get information, or do you wish to have, I can have a second, Counsel Sparrow wants to second it, and then?
I moved the deferral because I don't think we can solve it right here at the table. We're hearing different information.
Okay. I don't know, you had to hand it up, so, or do you wish to withdraw that second?
Worship, I'm, we're happy, we totally agree, once we know we're solved, what we're solving. I think the confusion is we need specificity, specificity as to what you seek us to solve.
Yep. And I'm not clear on the solve.
Well, Your Worship, I tried to add a few more parking spots, and staff are saying that that's going to probably scuttle the project. So certainly let's get some ramifications of this notion of an overpass and where maybe it would fit in. Would it be under the first phase, the third phase, you know, part three, which is what I heard just now, or would it be in the final phase? Or would it be dependent upon other development upon, upon the corridor?
Mr. Seifi, can you provide some comments on that?
Uh, Your Worship, if it's added as a condition of rezoning, then unless there is some specific criteria provided, such as the one that was described by Counselor Richter, connecting such a prerequisite to a certain phase of the development, then they won't be able to obtain a building permit or have the development permit issued until such time as appropriate securities have been put in place for the, for the pedestrian overpass. So that's something to keep in mind. It needs to have some specific connection to a certain phase of the project for it to be feasible and, and, and for the developer to be able to continue with the development as they currently propose. The costs are already referenced back in, I guess, it must be close to 10 years ago now, when the, the overpass was constructed, the cost was, at 66th Avenue, was about $3 million, as I recall. So we can expect something in the region of maybe $4 or $5 million for a pedestrian overpass, and we have currently no planned funding nor any sort of earmarked funding set aside for, for something like that. So it would have to be completely either through the DCC program, if we can add that to the DCC program at a future date, and that would then result in an increase in the DCC cost, DCC levies that we collect, and then partially funded through the developer or by this particular developer, and then potentially a percentage through general revenue as the DCC program requires a minimum of 1% of, of DCC programs to be funded through general revenue. So assuming $5 million cost, that's $500,000 or $50,000, $50,000 through general revenue apportionment. And again, going back to the, the basic need of it, I understand that the, the intent is to make sure that there is, I guess, closer proximity or connectivity to the facilities across the street. But as I, as I said earlier, the distance from the project to the signalized intersection at, at 80th Avenue is about 400 meters, which is considered to be quite walkable even for seniors.
So Counsel Long?
Well, it sounds like we just got the report now, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think we got the report, and I think basically it comes down to, I think council can make a decision on the amendments and, and certainly work with our staff on what traffic improvements need to be done for pedestrian access, and certainly to put it on to one development is, is a bit unfair. We have development cost charges, they're paying substantially, substantial development cost charges for this entire development, which would go towards improvement. So I, I think it takes a, it's, take a bigger look at it. So we'll carry on with the amendment to the amendment, and I have a long list.
There's a motion?
No, he withdrew, he didn't move, he withdrew the motion. Somebody else wants to move something, but right now, that's not there. So it wasn't seconded. Counsel Sparrow was a seconder and she didn't want it, so we had more discussion. Mr. Seifi provided an excellent report or report on, I think, the questions that Counsel Long were asking, so that hasn't gone forward. So we still have your amendment to the amendment on the floor, and I have a long list of folks who would like to speak to it, and so I'll move on to Counsel Davis.
Okay, we're back. I had some, I had some comments on that, but I guess, no, no longer.
No, so we're on the amendment to the amendment, which is to reserve the land for the footprint for the pedestrian overpass and to attach it to the, for part of the third building.
On the third phase. How, how long would the third phase be away, or if it may not even come? Or do we know?
I don't know if we have that information, it's probably up to the proponent.
That's correct, Your Worship. The timing for application for the eventual development permit and building permit for that specific phase is up to them. It could be soon if market conditions warrant, it could be some time. If this motion passes, it'll rework the economics of it somewhat, so that may be a factor when the market rises. So it's really a condition that prior to this site being developed too densely, that there would be this infrastructure put in place.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, I think, through you to Mr. Seifi, you mentioned supplementary funding for the project on 66th Avenue, and I know that there are, I know we've made a motion to move some projects ahead with the funding envelopes that may be available through other, other government agencies. And I'm just wondering about cost sharing in respect to this. Do you see that as a possibility in the long term, as being something that staff could put forward to, to the provincial or federal government as part of future funding opportunities that might come forward to support the DCC piece?
Certainly, Your Worship, it's something that we can pursue. I, I see the demand on, on the limited grant opportunities increasing, so the competition, if you will, is going to get tougher in terms of candidate. if you will, is going to get tougher in terms of candidates for, for grants and the, the projects that will come forward from not just the township, but other municipalities competing for the same limited grant opportunities. So it is something that we can certainly pursue, but the likelihood of it is, is uncertain at this point in terms of success.
And the second piece, I, I wanted to just ask about this, this particular extension, I guess it's of 199th Street. They have to build a, a bridge over Latimer Creek, too. Is that correct? To access this particular project? So there's a fairly heavy infrastructure cost here. So if you were to go to, say, the third building, there, that bridge right there, if you were to go to the third building, that, that's part of the necessity for the first phase, correct?
That's correct, your worship. Part of the rezoning requirement includes construction of 198B, I think, Street it is, which includes a, a bridge crossing of, of Latimer Creek.
Latimer Creek. So rather than encumber them with additional costs related to this particular phase, maybe by the, by the third phase or such, it could be more legitimate in terms of their support and look at offsets on DCCs. Is that a possibility?
That is, yes.
Thank you.
Council Qualley?
Thank you. Just to clarify the amendment, to the amendment, is it to reserve the land or to just put the land aside? Or is it to ensure that the developer has to build it by the third phase?
Both.
Okay, so I'm not going to support that, because I don't know what the third phase is going to look like. The first phase that they're proposing, half the development is, almost half the development is care facility. Like, the, the one twenty-story building is, is different levels of care. So I don't think that a lot of the residents that are living in care, receiving medical, full-time medical treatment, are going to be walking across the overpass to use the LEC. This, 10 years ago, the Coal Harmony Bridge was $3 million. Now recreating that bridge would be about $5 million. In seven years, or 10 years, 12 years, when we get to phase three, whatever that's going to look like, maybe that's $7 million. That's going to have a massive impact on affordability in there. And we just spent a lot of time talking about affordability and seniors. So I just, I can't support putting this on right now, when we are starting to phase out the rest of this development. Maybe it's going to turn into the next two buildings are full care, because that's what our community might need at that point. So I'm happy to have information come back from staff with the development as it, as it phases out. But right now, I think just saddling this developer on the fly with this is really unfair, when we don't understand the, the prospect.
Thank you. Council Sparrow?
Yeah, I, I agree completely with Council Qualley's comments. I think what we're talking about here, we, we don't fully understand the ramifications of what this could be 10 years from now, with the cost, what the phases will look like. As, as was stated, this could be a, a situation where those buildings are full care, because that is what our community needs. And now we're asking them to, to, you know, pay an additional five-plus million dollars on, on creating this bridge that, that very likely could, could not get used. So, you know, I, I think these types of decisions on the fly are not responsible government decisions, and I feel like we need to be looking into the future on, on these items of what, what maybe negative repercussions could come from this, that we're not fully aware of, sitting at this table right now. So I, you know, I, I think maybe having a discussion on, on possible, you know, setting maybe aside a part of the land to, to sort of accommodate that, if that was something that would be paid for by grants, or, or done through the DCC program. But again, here tonight at the table, come up with that planning and, and try to strap the developer for, for those types of decisions, I think is not responsible. So I'm not going to support it the way it's worded at this point.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Well, again, we're not being long-sighted about this. And what is it? Like, this developer is going to build four twenty-story towers, the biggest buildings we have in Langley Township right now. What, we need to give them a cost break? Come on. The big thing here is that we have run into issues before, like in Murrayville, and we need an overpass in Murrayville. So now we've put on, what is it, a per-unit fee for each unit that's built in Murrayville? We should be looking at something like that here, as well as, I agree with Mr. Backen, reserving the land and dedicating it for the footprint. But be realistic. People are not going to walk 400 feet, or 400 meters down to a crosswalk when 78th Avenue is there, they're going to start trying to run across the road to the LEC. And there's lots of things at the LEC that seniors might like to participate in, like the amphitheater, like the tennis courts, like music programs, or whatever it is that's, that's going to be booked in there. You know, we've got to get away from this idea that every developer that comes through isn't prepared to contribute to a future community amenity. They need to be prepared to, to contribute to a future community amenity, because otherwise, all the rest of the taxpayers are going to foot the bill, and that's not fair. So vote this one down if you want. I'm going to come back with what Mr. Backen suggested, that at least we reserve the land and dedicate the footprint of a pedestrian overpass. And I will pray that there's enough DCCs in the future to build this, and if there's not, then this council wears it.
Council Whitmarsh?
I think we should, you know, consider this application without these amendments. I think that we, we don't know what it's going to be like exactly in the future. We don't know whether the 80th Avenue crossing is the best place to go. You know, it is a busy Road 200th, and if you walked on, along 200th, I don't think we're going to have people trying to scramble across five or six lanes to save 20 or 30 meters to go down to 80th. I think that, you know, I think we should consider that something needs to be done in the future. I'd like to hear from staff as we, as we move towards it, how the combination of DCCs, some external grant funding, other mechanisms of growth in that area, how they might contribute, and, and to what might be the best thing. I think deciding here on the fly doesn't make sense. I'd like to make a decision on this building, without this being part of it. And certainly, the, the proponent will recognize our concern for crossing 200th as they move into future buildings. Staff will certainly be able to have conversations with them, and also be able to figure out appropriate costs as we move forward. So I'd like to move forward without the amendment.
Thank you. Listening to council, I, I certainly would, do not want to saddle last minute, let's throw $7 million at a, at a proponent who, who's building, so three twenty-story buildings eventually, is what they're proposing. We don't know that, that's their phasing, at this point, that could change in the future. We're way behind a lot of other municipalities in, in our region in, in starting to protect our land and go up, instead of sprawling out. So I think this is an excellent opportunity. Now, I look at this map here in front of me, I see an awful lot of green space, and those are going to be public amenities. There's a lot of amenities that this proponent is providing in our municipality for use of all of our residents. And just a last minute, to throw on, well, let's just give them a $5 million overpass to, to pay for, basically turns down this entire thing. Basically, if I was a proponent, I'd be, I'd be running away as fast as I possibly can. It's taken a long time to get this property, even to this stage where we can get some housing in there, and, and the seniors' care is what we've been looking at for a long time, in this, in the sub, was it Jericho Sub neighborhood? So to start throwing things on last minute to make it sound good that, yeah, we want to get a pedestrian overpass, is, is magic. This proponent is providing a lot of amenities, a lot of development cost charges, they aren't looking for any breaks from us, and this certainly is a, is, they have a track record in our community, and to start saddling them with this is just going to chase them away. We'll never see this, this built. So it sounds great on the council table, say, yeah, give us an overpass, give us the moon. Why don't they widen Highway 1 all the way to 264th? They could pay for that, too. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. This is a good project, lots of public amenities there, lots of DCCs. I can't support this, and it's time to move on and, and see a great project come to Langley. Council Qualley?
Well, I couldn't agree more. I think the picture Council Richter paints of seniors darting across 200th Street in the middle of the road to get to the amphitheater is a little bit extreme, but especially after hearing from the proponent that they're providing shuttle buses and car service and all kinds of things, that would facilitate easy transportation for the seniors from the facility to the amphitheater to enjoy the experiences there. And I do agree with Councilor, or sorry, with Mayor Fox, that, you know, the, there's...
Got a promotion again? He got, he got used to it. I should never leave a meeting.
You can pay me later. Apologies, Mr. Mayor, the real one. I do agree with you. I think it's, there are a lot of really great amenities in this process, in, in this development proposal, and, you know, Council Whitmarsh is right, I, I would absolutely consider this with none of these amendments, or amendments put in. And I think later, after this, if this is, is moving along, I'd be happy to entertain a discussion about creating some sort of fund, like we have in Murrayville, for the overpass there, that incidentally is about, I think, less than 10% funded at this point. But we could certainly talk about going forward, a per-door fee for the overpass, if we deemed it was necessary to do that, that was related to that whole area. So I'd be happy to entertain something, when we could give it thoughtful consideration, and actually put together a plan that made sense for everybody, that didn't just impact one developer. And I don't think there, this isn't a cost break, there's certainly no cost breaks in developing this land. If you look at the riparian areas and all of the amenities they're adding in, and the seniors' care, they haven't asked for any cost breaks at all. So anyhow, I'm not going to support this, and I'll look forward to a really comprehensive plan about pedestrian movement in this neighborhood as it builds out.
Thank you. Council Fox?
Yeah, Council Richter brought up the idea of Murrayville, and I, and Council Qualley reflected on that. And I, I really think that it has, you know, the per-door, obviously not for the rentals, but for the purchases, purchased pieces in this particular, and further north. North to this, to 80th is, I think it's in zone, zone commercial, am I not cor, correct in that, Mr. Seffy?
Not zoned, you mean designated?
Designated, sorry, yeah. Designated for commercial? Right, in there. So I, I like the idea of the per-door fee, if, if that's the best option that's available to help and transition these people across, and it's a necessity. So maybe that's something we can revisit at, at a later date.
Thank you. Council Davis?
Sorry, on that yellow, what's that yellow arrow there for? On 200th?
Oh, the...
The yellow arrow?
There's a, I guess it would be between...
About two-quarters the way up, two-thirds the way up. On 200th, it shows a little yellow, yellow line, dotted line across the...
Is that a future overpass?
Crosswalk?
Crosswalk?
Crosswalk.
Okay, I, I would wonder, and I, I wonder if we are not looking far enough out, because if we don't put an overpass there, now it will be taxpayers that'll be paying for it later. And actually, just some comments about, you know, everyone thinks that these people are maybe going to go that way. What if people come in and they park the event center and go to work the opposite way? You know, it's not maybe going to take, there's lots of, you know, if this is commercial, high-density, mixed-use, people may park there at night and walk across to go to an event.
We can't see where there is.
Where, where I said high-density, mixed, high-density was?
At the yellow line.
Okay, I guess it would be on Jer, it would be on the west side. So anyhow, I, I just can't, I, I look at that, and I think, you know, another council to say, to put it on the third phase, well, that phase may not even come, as far as I'm concerned. And 200th, you know, another thing, I just thought of it, a scary thing, but I would have liked to have gone to count, to staff to come back with options, because, you know, there are other options, just than other than an overpass. Has anybody ever thought of an underpass? I don't know. That may be, that may be out of it. You know, I, 200th, getting across 200th, getting across 208th, for that matter, when I feel siloed, trying to get across 216th with a sideswaggon is dangerous. So to not look at, at this point, hey, taxpayers are going to pay for it if you don't put it in now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, Council, Council Arneson, on the amendment, to the amendment.
Okay. I, I've decided to weigh in, having had the benefit now of listening to the conversation back and forth, and trying to create, I think, a context for how best to achieve this. On the one hand, don't burden the first phase of this development with the prospect of a potentially $5 million bridge. But on the other hand, looking to the future and trying to figure out, at what point are we going to say that we do need to have one? So I think what's important as a condition is to try and settle on some type of mechanism to achieve that. So if it's the door system, whatever it is, it needs to be attached somehow to this, because I also share the concern that at some point in the future, the cost is always going to increase, and there'll always be the sense that, why burden the developer with that? I mean, maybe the next component is going to be the affordability component, and we say, well, certainly, we can't ask them to do it now. So I don't know when the perfect time is to do it, but I think it's most important that if this amendment fails, then another amendment comes forward. So we at least can settle on something that staff can look at in terms of fairness, that's a mechanism, so that we can have some comfort and certainty going forward, that we do have an ability to create it when the right time arises, according to, you know, market conditions, I guess, and political will.
Thank you. Council Long?
I'm sure we would like to wrap this discussion up, but I, I'd like to ask, where would you put exactly this overpass? It'd probably go up at 80th, which means you've still got to walk 400 meters to get to it anyway. Would you put it mid-block at 76B? Like, I don't, that, that's one of the reasons I wanted to go to the deferral, if we were going to seriously look at an overpass, because where exactly would you put it? And the motion doesn't speak to exactly where that would go. But anyway, I don't know if we need an answer. I think we need to move on, your worship, but I think that's another consideration. You can't just pop it anywhere.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call the question on the amendment to the amendment.
Can you read it again?
Ms. Bauer, or? The amendment to the amendment?
The amendment to the amendment reads that the necessary land be reserved for pedestrian overpass, and that the overpass be completed prior to completion of the third building.
Okay, at completion, third...
The third twenty-story tower.
Which will never happen then. Okay, so I've called a question. Voting is open. I think we're clear on the motion. And the amendment to the amendment fails. Council Fox, Council Arneson, Council Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Council Qualley, Council Sparrow, Council Long opposed. We're back to the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Council Whitmarsh, you're next on the list?
No.
Okay.
Can you read the amendment again, please?
Can we have the amendment, please?
The amendment reads that additional prerequisite be added to require the construction of a pedestrian overpass over 200th Street to the Langley Events Center.
Thank you. Okay, called a question. And the amendment fails. Council Fox, Council Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Council Qualley, Council Sparrow, Council Long opposed. Back to the main motion. And Council Qualley, you're next on the list for discussion on the main motion.
Yeah, back to the main motion. I think that there is a lot of really great things about this application, and I'm, I'm excited to support the, the main motion. I think this brings a lot of much-needed service to our community, and I think it provides seniors that are already here in our community with an opportunity to downsize and live in, in, in a part of our community where they still have access to the rest of their family. I think this is a tremendous opportunity to keep families whole. And I think, you know, the, the intergenerational aspect of this is really interesting, and I, and I, I'm excited to see sort of how this is going to unfold and watch this development grow. And I'm happy to bring a motion after this development gets third reading, or whatever happens next, to talk about this whole area, and to have, to ask staff to help council figure out some solutions for pedestrian connectivity in that area. But as the motion... But as the motion is now, I'm going to support it and I'm thankful that we have an opportunity and we still have space in our community to build and provide these kinds of services to the seniors that live here. And I know that there's a lot of people who are really anxious to be able to stay in Langley and be able to keep their families together. And I appreciate the land use that the developer's been working with our staff and the proponent for 10 years on this project. I think we've been very luxurious over the last number of years with our use of land and it's time to go up. And this is where this density is designated and this is where this type of density belongs. So I'm in full support of this application.
Council Sparrow?
Thank you. Yes, I as well am in support of this application. I think it brings to our community a much-needed asset. The in-care aspect of it is something that is really unique. And we got to hear from the proponent when he came to speak at the public hearing about his philosophy. And I think Langley Gardens is a real testament to what he has accomplished. My grandma lived and eventually passed away at Langley Gardens and it was for her, it was a real home for her. And even while receiving care, it never felt institutional and it never felt like something you would imagine to be receiving the type of care she had. But it was, she was very well looked after and I think that that is something that we're now going to be offering to even more of our residents and people from outside of our community to be able to come and live and age in place in a facility that will really feel like a home to them. And I'm really excited to see it build out and I think it's something that will be a definite asset to our community and to the seniors that live in our community. So I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Okay, I'm glad the reference was made to intergenerational and I thought that that was very exciting when the proponent was talking about it. But if we're talking intergenerational, and maybe not in this first building, because the first building seems to be restricted to anyone over the age of 55. But that means there's going to be kids in the other buildings, the other three 20-story towers, if this is an intergenerational development, that if we pass this right now or give it third reading, we're rezoning for four towers. Well, seven, but four will be 20 stories. So you can't convince me that there won't be kids wanting to go across the street to get to the LEC. So I'd like to try another prerequisite to be added to the rezoning and that be that land be reserved and dedicated for the footprint of a pedestrian overpass to LEC. And I'd make that motion.
Second by Council Davis. And open the amendment, discussion on that. Mr. Seffi, there's a map of, or a diagram of the land, the site plan for the entire, so any indication now? I know we were discussing kind of location of an overpass and we're just assuming now that it would be, that this would be the appropriate location. So I don't know if the proponent has access to land on either side of his property or their property. So I'm just wondering where that would go. I see riparian areas there, I see maybe some spots there, but is that the appropriate place? I think that's way too, I'm just not sure if this is the right time for that. Mr. Seffi, can you provide some comments on the appropriateness of putting a pedestrian overpass, just happens to be in that, on that property?
Thank you, Worship. I guess notwithstanding what I said earlier in terms of the, the lack of need for an overpass, pedestrian overpass, if there was to be one, one would ideally locate it halfway between the two signalized intersections or proposed, one proposed signalized intersection and one existing, those being 76th Avenue and Eightieth Avenue. Therefore, the location would ideally be 78th Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I can support this. Thank you. Council Richter?
Well, I mean, if this is included in this one and it does go in at 78th, then that means they have to provide land on their side of 78th for the overpass. Whoever is developing north of 78th could provide, we should put the same amendment in or the same requirement in for whenever that rezoning comes forward. So we do have land for, footprint for the overpass on both sides of 78. And I think 78 is the logical place for it, simply because it goes directly to the LEC building. If you go down to Eightieth, you're away from the building and then you have to backtrack to the building. So, and if they don't want to do it on 78th, maybe they do it on the south side of that stretch of property and then the property that's below it there that hasn't been developed yet, they can do the other part of the footprint. That would make it fair and spread it out between two developers. But I really do think the intent of this emotion, of this motion is that we're giving thought through the rezoning process as to the need for a future bypass or overpass and to the preferred location of that overpass.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. I feel that the, you know, that this, this potential overpass, you know, might be helpful for us. But I know that we've heard already that Council Qualley has suggested maybe a motion asking staff to work with council on appropriate walkable patterns in that area, creating a walkable community and some of the considerations that might go forward with that. It seems that this request may be a bit premature. I certainly appreciate the desire to show that we are thinking ahead and that we're going to set some land aside. But it seems to me that maybe a good discussion with staff to talk about the walkability of this area. And if we determine through that conversation with staff and council that pedestrian bridge is the best way to deal with the walkableness of this entire community, then we could, in future points, ask the proponent, because they're certainly not developing that corner, that looks like it's Phase Three, that's quite a few years down the road. We could certainly ask them in there to put some land aside for it, but to do it after we've had that discussion as opposed to deciding ahead of time that somehow we know better without having a good conversation and input from staff on where and when this could be built. So at this point, I think it's premature. I think we should wait until we've had the discussion. I look forward to a motion hopefully brought forward by Council Qualley.
Thank you. Council Qualley?
Thank you. Yes, I am going to bring that motion, because I don't know that an overpass is the right solution. I don't know what the solution is. Perhaps it's an underpass. I don't know what the solution is, but I'm going to leave it to staff to make recommendations of how we can best serve the pedestrian connectivity in that area. And I'm happy to have that come forward as soon as staff can bring it forward. But I understand staff has about 8 million other things in the queue that they're currently working on for council. So, yeah, I'm not prepared to make these kinds of decisions on the fly. It's just too important and it's just too big of a deal. And there's lots of time, I think, where we can have a conversation about the entire connectivity of the pedestrian realm there and I will be bringing that motion forward later.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Mr. Becken, once this rezoning goes through, where this piece of land is going to be eligible for seven buildings, four of which are 24-story, 20-story towers, will the value of that land increase as a result of this rezoning?
Your Worship, as we've seen, once a property has third reading, it certainly does affect the value and increases its marketability. In this case, though, we understand the proponent intends to build these out.
Okay. So if we were to look down the road and staff were to come back and say, yep, we've had a look at it and we think 78th Avenue is the best place to build this, will council then have to buy that land at fair market value? If we want to put it in 70, at 78th Avenue, are we going to have to buy that land back from the developer at the then fair market value of land that's been rezoned for 20-story towers?
Our jurisdiction to require the developer to make contributions comes at the rezoning stage. We do not have that at the DP stage. We can certainly make suggestions, but they were limited to form and character. So if the corner of 78th and 200th were to say be the subject of a right-of-way or something of that nature, that could assist us in future if there was to be an overpass at that point. And if there wasn't, we would simply release it.
Okay. So give it back to the developer at that point if we're not going to build it there?
He could also apply to it if there's not any action within a reasonable period of time, being a number of years.
So how much would the value of the land increase, rough guess? Are we talking double what it's worth now? Because we know land in Willoughby is going for, what, 1.5 million an acre?
I'd hesitate to guess, but I'll give you a bit of an answer. The problem with it is right now it has a zoning and also a designation and the designation loosely calls for this. So the values may actually reflect that potential use. The challenge we face with the issue is not so much what's going to happen to the value going forward, it's really what the value would be right now, which could be a baseline of a certain percentage, up to 100% of the proposed market value. Again, our only opportunity to actually make the requirement for the dedication or right-of-way or easement is at the rezoning stage. After that, for this development, I don't believe there's any further rezonings that are contemplated.
So they would make no further contribution to this?
They would have...
Future developers in the area might have to, but they won't.
Correct. So one option would be, it's the construction side, as Mr. Seffi said, it's to go by way of the DCC program, to add the project to the DCC program, which could encompass a land acquisition cost or development cost. Or we could try to take some sort of a conditional right-of-way now. Mr. Seffi, in terms of this development, do you anticipate any further develop, further rezonings once this goes through? I know there'll be subsequent DPs, but am I missing anything as to any subsequent rezonings?
Not currently being anticipated in terms of a rezoning. However, having said what you said, Mr. Becken, earlier, in terms of the development permit condition, if in fact 48th Avenue was, sorry, 78th Avenue was selected as the best location, development permit application could potentially be denied by council based on the citing. I would suggest if that is the intent of council.
No, my intent is to set aside the land for what we're going to need in the future, do it now at the rezoning. The other question that I have is that if we should go with some sort of a per-unit fee or a per-door fee like we have in Murrayville, once we vote on this tonight, can we go back and put a per-door fee on any of the buildings in this rezoning?
Worship, I'll start. The per-door fee is the equivalent of a community amenity contribution.
Excuse me, maybe just interrupt. We're at 10 o'clock, so I do need a motion of council to extend the meeting. So if we can extend it to 10:30. Council Qualley, Council Secundar, Council Davis, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, I did need that motion.
So that format has some challenges to us. I think, though, without having a detailed study, our suggestion would be that if there was to be such a structure, we'd likely like to see it as part of the DCC program and request the DCC amendment that could then have the associated rebates for the developer themselves. So having said that, if it was to be a per-door fee, and that probably would not be our recommendation, it can be done now, doing it later is a challenge, but we would probably prefer to see it as simply added to the DCC program.
And if we add it to the DCC program, does that have to be done at the rezoning stage for this particular development?
Your Worship, the DCC program does not need to be done now, it can be done later. The triggering mechanism for the DCC varies, but generally I think it's going to be at the subdivision or building permit stage, and in this case, it would likely be building permit.
Okay. Well, I still think by us asking that land be reserved and dedicated for the footprint, we're not overly handicapping this particular development. We can give the land back if we don't need it in the future, but we are saving a future council an escalated fair market value for the purchase of this land should we decide that that's where it has to go. So I would encourage council, put this condition in. It's not a major hardship for the developer.
Thank you. Council Long?
Worship, the wording of the motion would be important to me at the moment, because I think we need the word potential overpass in there rather than an overpass. Because, and I was going to put, yeah, let's put the word potential in there.
With unanimous consent, council will add that amendment.
And your worship, as, you know, I was going to say, seeing it was Mr. Becken's idea, he could tell us how it's all going to work. But I mean, I think he, I think he has. I think that the fact is that we've had a lot of discussion tonight about the need of one, of an overpass, maybe, maybe not. Putting this in here, I don't think is going to be a huge hardship, I hope, to the developer. And also, as Mr. Becken says, if the need is not there in the future, as staff are sort of indicating, then there'd be no harm if the land can be given back. So let's make a vote on it.
Thank you. Council Sparrow?
Yeah, I guess just trying to wrap my head around this. If it was to be land set aside, is that at 78th Avenue and 200th where you see on the map here? And would that be replacing, like, taking off the end building? Or would it be able to be accommodated in the Greenway setback that is already there along the 200th Street? Or are we then taking land where that building, the last building, would be? Do we know, like, I know we don't know that, but I'm just saying theoretically.
Nothing is certain, but I think we would attempt to actually preserve it along the southern half of 78th Avenue and perhaps in the Greenway setback. There's nothing inconsistent necessarily with the right-of-way coexisting with the Greenway setback. As you may look further to the south at the Cola Harmony-type bridge, you'll see the footing sitting there and they would be effectively in the pathway.
So then I'm just wondering, do we already currently have that Greenway setback? Is that, that's, that's, would be our, would be ours already, right? The setback there? That's...
We would have the Greenway setback, but this, I think, would alter the language to make sure that the Greenway setback is multipurpose in terms of being for the setback itself or for the potential pedestrian overpass. Now, Mr. Seffi, you could perhaps assist in, is our typical language for the Greenway setback inclusive of such things as overpasses?
So, so could the motion then just actually specify that within that Greenway setback, we reserve the right to place a potential pedestrian overpass? And that would be sufficient in that the developer would understand where that, what lands were referring to? And we would then be clearing it up, whether or not it was already inclusive in that it would just be accounted for and we wouldn't have to actually be taking extra land from him?
That's correct. I think that would be, one solution is simply to make it very clear that it's included.
Okay, so that's currently not the case within this motion, but I could amend that motion, that motion to just include that that potential for a pedestrian overpass be included within the Greenway setback that's accommodated already within the plan?
That's correct. Or we could simply seek a friendly amendment if that's the desire of council.
So can we seek a friendly amendment? That, nope, that's not friendly? Okay, then I can make that amendment.
But is there a second to that?
Second.
Council Fox, second to open amendment two. Discussion on that.
Why don't we just add the word appropriate?
No, so what we're, what we're doing is referring to that a potential footprint for a pedestrian overpass be accommodated for within the Greenway setback that's currently at the 78th and 200th Street portion of the project.
Thank you. Council, okay, so, yeah, is that clear? Thank you. Council Davis?
You know, it may not fit in that footprint. It's a pretty big overpass. It, you know, it may not, you know, it kind of narrows things down. Well, yeah, you know, like, you gotta, you go up and turn and, you know, it may not fit in that footprint, that's the only other thing.
Okay, thank you. Council Richter?
Well, you know, there's been comments made earlier about overly restrictive language. I think what's being proposed here is way overly restrictive. I think that the language that's been proposed, that land be reserved and dedicated for the footprint of a potential pedestrian overpass to the LEC, gives enough latitude to staff and the developer. I'm sure the developer is going to try to put it on the Greenway anyway. So I would say, leave it open for that flexibility.
Thank you. Council Fox?
Yeah, it's going to have to, actually, 78th Avenue is not the most effective place and I may refer this through to Mr. Winslet. Because actually, if you go straight across the street from 78th Avenue, you're into the detention pond, are you not, Mr. Winslet?
Pretty close, Your Worship.
So, yeah, we might be, we might be going across 78th Avenue into a swimming pool, which is a detention pond, so...
So, you know, Seventy-Eighth Avenue, we've mentioned Seventy-Eighth Avenue, but I go back to Mr. Seffy's comment about Seventy-Sixth Avenue, because it's halfway in between, which would be the southern, southern part of this particular development property. So, maybe that the best place to put it is straight off of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, right over to where the Mountain View Church is right now, and solid ground as opposed to the Latimer, or, sorry, the, yeah, the Latimer Creek Headwaters, which is a detention pond. So, I'm just, I'm, I think we're trying to micromanage this thing, and I think that there's unforeseen circumstances here that could create a problem. I think that, I think the more we talk about it, the more we get ourselves wound up here. And I think we need to have, in the context of this whole area, this Jericho and Subneighbourhood Plan, the walkability, walkability report from staff that shows us and demonstrates what the best, what the best options are. So, there's absolutely no way, I don't see, where we could put an overpass at Seventy-Eighth Avenue, because I'm looking at page 37, and if you notice, there's a, there's a huge detention pond there, and it, we're running right into water, we're going to have to put in the Greenway on that side. Either that or go right over the detention pond, which is another additional huge expense.
Thanks for that.
So I-
Oops, sorry, I thought you were finished.
I think we just leave it alone here, and we get staff to do a report on walkability.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
So just for, through your worship, to staff, just for clarification, if we, if we do not set some land aside now for this, and we determine later that we do need it, we, we, the developer at that time may not, would not have to give us the land. Is that, is that correct?
That would be the concern, depending upon the location that was chosen and the wording of the Greenway setback.
So is it also such that if we did have this land set aside, and then determined through the conversations with staff and council, that we didn't need to have an overpass, and we didn't need that land anymore, that we could just return that back to the proponent? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, it seems to me that the wording that Counsel Richter is proposing, then, is probably general enough that allows us to actually do this. It doesn't specify a specific location, it just says that land should be set aside for this, that can be worked with staff and, and the proponent. In the meantime, staff and the proponent, or, and council can discuss the walkability, and we can always return it back to them. So, I'm, I was, I'll support Counsel Richter's motion here, I think it's general enough and doesn't direct us enough, so-
We're on Counsel Sparrow's amendment to the amendment right now.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so this is Counsel Sparrow's amendment to the amendment. Is that what you're, I'm a little confused on what you're-
Yeah, sorry, I wouldn't support Counsel Sparrow's, because I, as Counsel Fox has said, I think it's determining exactly where this needs to go, and I'm not sure we have the knowledge to say where it should go, so I can't support Counsel Sparrow.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. All of these amendments and amendments to amendments are presumptive that we know the location and that we need an overpass. I don't know that either of those are the right thing to do, and so, I'm going to come back again later with the amendment to ask staff for a pedestrian connectivity report on this whole area. And we heard from this proponent, the livability of this development is really incredibly critical to them. And if there's a need for the pedestrian overpass and some better connectivity, there's, we have mechanisms to work with the proponent to create that. And I think the proponent is really trying to build the best community they can build here in this area, and if we come back to them with, and, believe me, they will have heard all about all this discussion for the next couple of phases, that there's an opportunity to make some adjustments both from them and from us. But it's presumptive to think that we need an overpass, that an overpass is the right solution, and that it should belong on Seventy-Eighth Avenue, so I'm not going to support it. I'm going to wait for the experts to tell me what's necessary.
Thank you. Counsel Sparrow?
Yeah, I mean, my hope, my attempt was to narrow it down, you know, so that we could actually sort of see what we were dealing with, with having it be placed within the current setback that we already have within this project. I think by, by just sort of stating that we're going to provide or have land set aside, I think that is, you know, I'm not quite sure how much land that is and what we would be requiring them to do, whether we'd be seeing them lose a whole potential building site because of now this required pedestrian overpass. So, I do agree with Counsel Qualley's comments in that we need to be looking at this from a bigger picture perspective than just trying to squeeze this into the very first development that has come forward on this corridor of, you know, needing some, or of having density and the 20 stories that they've proposed. So I feel like we've sort of just, we're trying to sort of squeeze this in without having a bigger picture and a bigger plan, and that is why we're here at almost 10:30 at night talking about this and not really actually having enough information. So, I'm happy to withdraw my, or we can just vote it down, that's fine, but I do, I do think that this is a much bigger issue of us looking at the whole corridor and not just one aspect of it, so, yeah.
Thank you, can't withdraw it, it's now owned by-
Nope, that's fine, I'll just vote against it, that's all right.
Fair enough. Okay, I'm going to call a question on the amendment to the amendment. It fails unanimously, haven't said that in a long time. Do you want me to read them all out, Ms. Bauer? It's okay? All right, thank you. So now we're back to the amendment. Sorry? Oh, I do have, a lot of talk, but I have two speakers on the amendment who may wish to speak or may withdraw. Counsel Davis, did you still wish to speak? You're on the, this is the amendment, now we're, amendment to the amendment, has been voted on, so we're now on the amendment. You're on the list, that's all.
You know, can you say the amendment?
The amendment is, if you could just read the amendment out, so we get back on track here. Thank you.
The amendment reads that land be reserved and dedicated for the footprint of the construction of a potential pedestrian overpass over Two Hundredth Street at the Langley Event Center.
Thank you.
Counsel Whitmarsh, you still speak?
Yeah, I sort of spoke on it already, but I would just say that I think, I think this makes sense. I think holding some land and having that, reserving that, that doesn't preclude the fact that we need a motion to move forward and have staff work with council. We can always return the land back, it makes sense to me in a positive way, I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just said a lot-
Oh, sorry, Counsel Sparrow?
Can we just quickly talk about how that works? So, we have land, we haven't said how much land, do we, I don't know if that actually gets explained to them or not, them being the proponent. And then, when and how does that work of returning the land to them if it's decided that we don't need the land? And how much land are we actually returning to them?
So your worship, perhaps better to think of it more as a notation or charge on the property. I think the, having heard the discussion, it would be to simply make reference to a right-of-way on the property to allow for an overpass to connect across Two Hundredth Street. That way, it's wide open to the entire property, and if there's not to be one built, then that right-of-way would simply be discharged.
Okay, so that would be through future planning, when it gets to the detailed phasing of that, the future phases, where we would have the reserve of the right to actually discuss that, because we can't in the forum setting character if we didn't put this in?
Correct.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, call a question. And the motion carries, or the amendment carries, Counsel Fox, Mayor Fowles, Counsel Qualley opposed, so I'm back to the motion as amended. Counsel Whitmarsh, did you wish to speak to it? Counsel Richter, you've spoken twice already, I'm going to call the question on the-
Are the main motion as amended?
Yes, you spoke, this has come up, you've spoken twice on it, so I'm going to call the question.
No, excuse me, you didn't have an amendment, you just got the-
I know, but it doesn't, you don't get a whole new chance just because it's been amended. You've spoken to the amendment, you had your opportunity to speak to the amendment, now we're on the motion as amended, you've spoken-
On the main motion?
That's right, and you've spoken twice. So I'll call the question on the main motion as amended. So it's a motion with the amendment that has just been passed.
Can I get a ruling on that?
Well, you can challenge my, you can challenge the chair if you don't agree with my ruling, but the machine comes up here that you've spoken, this will be a third time, on the motion, and so we've gone through all the amendments, and now on the motion as amended, everybody gets their two chances.
Except if the two times I spoke was to put forward an amendment, one of which died and the other of which carried.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the clerk if they've been keeping track. It's just, I'm trying to keep it fair for everybody, and we're on the main motion as amended. It's hard to keep track with all the, all the discussions we've had.
Your worship, your chair, I can call the-
I'm going to ask Ms. Bauer to help me out.
I'm sorry, I just need a little qualification from Counsel Richter. Counsel Richter, when you spoke, you were speaking, you were speaking to propose the amendment, or were you speaking on the main motion?
No, I spoke to propose the amendment, and that first amendment-
Okay, I'll go along with that. Fair enough.
And the second time I-
Yeah, fair enough, I'll go along with it, don't have to explain. Counsel Richter, go ahead, you got the floor.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
You're most welcome.
Anyway, I just wanted to say, I was very, very impressed by the developer. I think they were extremely passionate, I think they are dedicated to, to trying to put more needed seniors' care in this community. I share Counselor Arneson's concern about how affordable will be, I don't think it will be affordable, but I think it will attract more people from Vancouver out here. I am concerned about the parking, I don't think there's going to be enough parking simply because of all the, the fact that we don't have transit there. And the big thing that bothers me about the whole thing, and why I am voting no, is I don't think 20 stories are human-scale building. And we won't be building a human-scale community with 20-story towers, and these will just be the first of the 20 and higher story towers that'll probably go into this corridor. So, on the basis of human scale, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you very much. I'm excited about this project, I think it's about time Langley saw some towers. You know, we talk about preserving our land base, and it's not getting any cheaper, as we just talked about not too long ago, but what's the cost of land in Willoughby? And I think it's approaching $4 million an acre. Certainly, we want to preserve land, we want to put, put density in where density belongs, and definitely along this corridor. I don't know what affordable is, if I asked nine people, including myself on this council, to give a definition of affordable, it would be nine different definitions. This is affordable to those who want to live in there, and there certainly is a need for that, and I wouldn't want to say no to this, and then a whole generation of people don't get an opportunity to move into a great place like this. Talk about hospitals, that's not in our jurisdiction, and hospitals are always a little bit behind. I think the whole history of the Langley Memorial Hospital has been, it's always been a bit behind, even when it was first conceived by the, by the folks that lived, lived here in the 40s and 50s, that we needed a hospital, we needed a hospital, and we still need more hospital. We're not going to solve that at this, at this table, and I heard that was a concern, but there are some improvements in the hospital. So, this is, and seniors coming to this area, well, I guess I'm one of those, I've lived in Langley for almost 40 years, and one day I may want to downsize to something like this. I'm no different than a lot of people in Langley, and certainly we are embracing people from throughout the region coming to our community, as those from our community are going to other regions in the province and in the community. So, parking, I'm not, I don't have a problem with parking. The evidence from other seniors' residences like this definitely show that there's a less requirement for parking. There is transit on Two Hundredth, certainly, can always ask for more and have it improved, and we're working towards that, and it is improving, so I don't think that's an issue. I think this is a great project, it is affordable to those who are going to move in there. I don't think we need to judge what's affordable and what's not affordable. We certainly want to look at, as I mentioned earlier in the afternoon meeting, at tools to provide affordable housing, based on the Metro Vancouver, or based on the qualifications that we come up with at this council meeting, to provide the tools to allow affordable housing. But it has been chucked around so much, that term, that nobody really knows what it means. And this is a great project, and I'm really happy to support this, and looking forward to more towers coming to Langley to preserve our very, very limited land base. Thank you. I'm going to call the question, because Counsel Qualley is tired of listening to-
No, I really have to-
Along with everybody else, okay. Question's called. And it carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Davis opposed. We have five minutes left, I'm going to rock it right onto the mayor's report, best part of the entire meeting, and it's short, so, it's only been a week since the last meeting.
Good evening, everyone that stayed, I hope everyone had a great weekend and enjoyed the Super Bowl, great finish. I tell you, I didn't expect to see Brady get sacked, but he did, and there went the game at chances. But he already won four Super Bowls, so that's maybe enough. Today, council toured the new Langley Youth Resource Centre located on 203 Street and 62 Avenue, which is going to be opening very soon, so our young people can access additional support services. And, now the media's leaving, just when I get into it. This is the most important part, Miranda. So the centre was created through a partnership that includes various levels of government and numerous community partners and contributors, and thank you to them. The youth centre will replace the youth hub operated by Encompass Support Services Society. The new five-bedroom modular home will offer more programming space to youth seven days a week, providing a safe space for vulnerable youth where they can seek counselling and medical services. Funding was provided by the province and by a local youth homelessness task force operated through the Langley School District, which contributed $18,000. The funding is raised by students who rally together to raise awareness about youth homelessness in Langley. The township of Langley provided the land for this very worthwhile project. Upcoming events, as has been mentioned earlier, is on Thursday, February 8th, there's a public open house from 3:00 to 8:00 at St Andrews Church in Fort Langley to discuss the projects that are proposed for that area. Monday, February 12th, BC Family Day at the Langley Event Centre, there's, there's, we've got, on Monday, there's a skate from 10:00 to 12:00, the Giants are on the ice from 1:00 to 3:00. There's lots of activity and funding for all ages, and emissions by donation to Basic for Babies and the Township of Langley firefighters charities, and this is presented by CND Logistics, so certainly lots to do. And there's going to be a scavenger hunt at Langley Centennial Museum on Monday from 1:00 to 4:00, and it's free to all ages, and they can find clues and learn about Langley's past and make crafts. So, with that, and I know Counsel Sparrow attended on my behalf when I was away, the Greater Vancouver Home Builders Dinner Meeting on Wednesday, thank you very much. And does council have anything to add to this report? Counsel Long?
I have new business.
New business, okay, we'll wait for you for that. Counsel Richter, did you want to add anything to? New business, okay, so, with that, I'm going to move to other business, and Counsel Long, you're on the floor.
I'd like to refer the delegation from the Willoughby, excuse me, Residents Association to staff for a report on the, on the concerns that they brought up.
Okay.
Let me forward back to council. Seconded by Counsel Richter, and discussion on referral? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I could, could, are the referral to staff include a report on costs and what can be accommodated in the coming year under the existing or the budget that we've just approved?
Yeah, I think the report needs to come back-
Will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Unanimous consent, we'll accept that, thank you very much. I'm going to call a question on that, and we'll call that M1. Carries unanimously?
And Mr. Mayor, I have a notice of motion for the next meeting.
All right, you're on-
I would like to move reconsideration of rezoning application number 100483. While I take exception, this doesn't have to be in the notice of motion, to Mr. Thompson's position that we must take this to public hearing, I don't believe we do. I do believe there is enough new information brought out tonight that merits reconsideration, so that's why I'm putting forward a notice of motion on reconsider-
Reconsideration, thank you. And, great, with that, no other business, call for motion-
Turn it!
Oh, sorry, your button came, your button came off, so I thought you were done. Okay.
Oh, I didn't want you to think I was speaking to that, so, okay. I do have a notice of motion, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll try and be quick, time is of the essence.
That's right, you've got 30 seconds, no, one minute, take your time.
Where is the Willoughby area is experiencing exponential growth, which growth is anticipated to contribute, oh, sorry, to, my screen is fading, and so am I, to continue for the next 25 to 30 years, and whereas the 208th Street corridor is already a very congested north-south connector at only approximately 30% buildout, and whereas higher-density new development continues to create further challenges with respect to piecemeal roadway on 208th Street, and whereas numerous roadway networks and linkages, such as the 216th interchange, 212 connector, Eightieth Avenue and Labonte connector, will all be expanding the volume of vehicles on this critical corridor over the short and medium-term time horizon, thereby adding to the congestion, and whereas historical policies have relied upon the incremental expansion of the roadway based on DCC funding, thereby allowing external market forces to dictate when the adjacent roadways along 208th will be widened, resulting in undesirable constraints upon the ultimate completion of the corridor relative to the exponential increase in traffic volumes and congestion. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs staff to provide an update to the 2015 staff report outlining associated costs with the widening of the 208th Street corridor, as well as providing further options, including the opportunity for municipal borrowing and other best- including the opportunity for municipal borrowing and other best management practices relative to DCCs in order to facilitate completion of the 208th Street corridor in a timely fashion.
And you can provide that to the clerk, because they weren't typing as fast as you were speaking. All right, great, thanks. Any other business? Council Fox, seconded by Council Davis. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you.